Welcome to the August 8th, 2023, 6:30 PM City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, in the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united by individuals who believe in justice, law, and
Clerk, would you please read the rules of speak?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions or requests must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a sign-up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Councils should be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. City Attorney, same please.
Yes, sir. Later in the meeting, I'll read the rules for quasi-judicial items, which have their own rules. In addition to what the clerk has read with regard to speaking times, if I can certainly remind Council and the public, we also have rules to decorum, if that's what you would like me to read at this time.
Go ahead.
The purpose of the City Council meeting is to discuss city business, and property decorum must be displayed by all in attendance. Public input and participation is encouraged. However, all persons in attendance shall comply with the rules for meeting procedures and shall refrain from any action that disrupts the orderly proceedings of the council meeting or hinders the council from performing its duties. No person shall interfere with the rights of others to speak, hear, see, or attend the proceedings, make threats of violence, disrupt the proceedings with shouting, fail to confine their remarks to the agenda item under consideration, nor continue to speak after the allotted time has expired, as these actions shall be considered disruptive and disorderly. The mayor shall caution any person who violates these provisions and disrupts the orderly proceeding of the council meetings, and they shall be directed to comply. Any person who fails to comply, as cautioned, shall be ruled out of order, shall forfeit the remainder of their speaking time on the agenda item under consideration, and will be requested to return to their seat. Persons who fail to comply as directed shall be subject to removal from the council chambers by law enforcement or such other actions as may be reasonably necessary to enforce these regulations. Notwithstanding, the mayor may order the immediate removal of any person from the chamber who poses a threat to property or life safety. Nothing in this section shall be construed to limit or restrict a person's rights created by Constitution, law, ordinance, or regulation.
Thank you very much. Council, I need a motion to approve the minutes of July 25th, presentation meeting, 5:30, and City Council meeting.
Same move. Second.
A motion by Member Nelson, and a second by Member Cole. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Minutes are accepted. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. I'm going to make a request to have an agenda adjustment. The applicant has withdrawn item 9D, which is SSA 6, 2023, Tropic Street.
And you just need to announce that to us, correct?
We'll remove it if
There are sometimes we do that, and sometimes we don't. Can I have a motion to adjust the agenda?
Yes. Move to withdrawal. SC Plan Amendment, SSA Number 6, 2023, 1625, Tropic Street.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
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 Opposed? Removed. City Manager.
We're on to Boards and Commissions, which is item 6A. This is the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. The Board of Adjustment Appeals semi-annual report is included in your agenda packet with no action required.
Thank you very much, and we quickly move to petitions and requests.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Dr. Kathleen O'Rourke, and I'm on Palmer Drive. And what I wanted to do before I began is just give you a little background about myself, because it's relevant. I am a professor emeritus of epidemiology at the University of South Florida in Tampa. And before I retired, I was the department chair of Epidemiology and Biostatistics. So the reason I'm telling you that is because I do have skills in study design, questionnaire development, and analysis of data. And the last meeting, Mayor Diesel, I was really pleased to hear you speak about the fact that you wanted to know more about what the citizens' opinions were about these proposed developments.
Yes.
Thought that was fantastic, but I had had a similar idea several months ago. And so what I did actually was develop and conducted a study asking citizens in the registered voters in Titusville, their opinions about growth and development. And so I'm here today to ask you, because I can't, I can't give it to you in three minutes, to put this on an agenda item for the next meeting. It's probably going to take me about 10 minutes to give the talk, probably less. I'm from Boston. I talk really fast. But I really would like to share this information with you.
City Manager or City Attorney, I am not at all sure how to make that happen.
Partly I want to understand, what is the point of the presentation?
I'm sorry. My point of talking about the citizens' opinions about growth and development in Titusville.
Because that's not something, of course, you would vote on.
No, it's not.
Trying to understand, you want to speak for all the citizens, or do you want to promote a different procedure?
No, no. I want to provide the opinion of the citizens. I had conducted a research study. We collected email addresses, and I have 680 responses to this survey I gave them. And I simply just want to provide the information that they gave to me on that survey.
Okay, well, of course, that would be up to Council and the City Manager as to whether you want to create an agenda item in the scope of that agenda item to let the public speak in that regard, or if you feel the need to have a presentation on that. Or just having to speak during petitions or requests.
Right.
Member Stokel.
Yep. Yeah, that was going to be my question, was to see how many responses she had collected. I would be interested in hearing it, especially if it is 10 minutes. I know we've done it before with various updates, either at our presentation meeting or just allowing her additional time during petitions. But I would be curious to see what the results are if you collected over 600.
Correct.
Member Nelson.
I was sort of thinking it'd be great if she could meet with you, Mayor, and sort of get an idea of what the presentation would be, and let us know, come back to us.
I, and before you said that, I was thinking, if nothing else, I'd kind of get an idea of where you're going and what you're saying, and doesn't mean we'd say you can't say that. It just means I'd kind of like to have an idea, so maybe you could meet with me and just say, here's what we found out here, and here's what we found out there, and then we could probably look at. I would think if we do it, it'd be a presentations day. That would be my thought. So I would say I'd be glad to meet with you, and that's not to say, oh, you have to pass a test to be there. I'd just like to get an idea of
No, it's fine. I'm happy to meet with you.
I also think I'd do better sometimes when somebody can sit with me and tell me, well, this is what I thought here, and this kind of was swayed here, or whatever you could tell me.
Happy to do so. So I'll just set up a time to meet with you.
What you call Miss Virginia would be the thing to do.
Okay.
Virginia, I say Miss Virginia. Virginia Blalock.
I know who she is.
Good, good. And she's really good about getting to me, and I would say we could probably sit down and meet within, certainly a week from now.
Okay, that sounds fine.
That's awesome. I think that's really cool that you
Yeah, I thought it would be really helpful for you to have it.
I think that that's the way you're coming about it, and I appreciate that.
Okay, great. All right.
Thank you. Give her a call, and we'll sit down in some office here. I don't have a real office, but we'll sit somewhere.
All righty, we'll find a spot. Thank you.
This is a request. Next up, thank you very much for that.
That smile. Hi, I know. Melinda Villan, 236 Acorn Drive.
Thank you.
Everybody, hi. I am here for the third month in a row to point out all the ways the dead-end siding street in a historic neighborhood does not conform to modern road standards. Oh, and I have all these. These are, as they go along, they're
That'll be important.
You can see pictures and ordinances and statutes and everything about what I'm talking about. It's actually all in order of what I'm about to be saying. The business was allowed to cut into the public right-of-way to build a path to the standalone shed in their backyard, creating their own loading and unloading zone on the street. When I pointed it out to code enforcement, they told me it was okay, because it was just a little bit. A little bit being 25% of the right-of-way. So, citizens of Titusville, if you want to cut into a street to build a sidewalk to your backyard shed, it's totally okay, and you can deal with that without a permit, because if it's allowed on the side street, it's allowed on any local street, right? Though technically, it's 20 feet across. On paper, only 16 feet has unstructured access. It dead-ends with no turnaround provided. There's only a two-foot buffer between the street and residential property. It has no outlet sign at the opening, which discourages the public from using the street. There are electrical wires that hang lower than 15 feet across the street. The lowest wire probably hangs about nine feet at its lowest point over the pavement. Freight trucks are 13 and a half feet high. Box trucks are eight to 10 feet high. Every large truck that uses the street has the potential to take out electrical wires. The city has not maintained the street for the four and a half years we've lived there. In fact, I doubt the city has ever really properly maintained the street, as every old Google picture has something stored at the end of the street. In fact, when we bought the property, it had a dead car in the street for months. You've neglected it until someone complains about freight trucks backing up less than six feet from their house, and then county enforcement tells the business they can use it how they want, because it's a city street. And it gives the business the number for city maintenance to take care of the branches hanging over the road. So the business calls, and the city comes and cuts two large limbs off mature specimen live oak tree so that trucks can get by. The limbs that were cut have been lower than 15 feet since at least 2007. The tree also is after the electrical wires, which hang lower than 15 feet. The edges of your street are crumbling and breaking off. It does not appear on your street survey map for 2019, so are you even sure if it's safe to bring in commercial vehicles that cause more damage to roadways down the street? The street does not benefit the public. It benefits three private landowners. The city has saved a lot of time, resources, and money in ignoring the street for who knows how many years. I now expect for it to be maintained as any other city street, wasting taxpayer dollars and city workers' time, or the city can realize that it does not truly benefit the public and abandon the street. I am still asking for the street to have a size and weight restriction, preferably with no commercial vehicles allowed. According to Florida statutes, any street that does not have two 12-foot-wide through lanes of traffic, which the side street does not have either of those, can have restrictions put on it for larger trucks by the local jurisdiction. So why has the city not done so? Do I need to get F.D.O. involved instead? Thank you.
I guess, Kevin, I think we talked about this before, because, and I'm not sure where it's gone, but I know she's been here three times, and I'd like to at least know where we're going with this and go from there.
Yeah. What staff is looking into is, we do have through-truck restrictions on numerous roads connecting Hopkins to US-1. So we're looking at a truck route restriction, which would either come through the City Manager or back before Council that would restrict the primary roadway from having truck traffic, which would in turn restrict the alleyway as well.
Which is, at the minimum, what I'm asking.
Which exist on streets such as Jackson, near the, further north end, near the high school and some other areas, where we have restricted truck traffic. It just restricts the number of axles that can travel down the street. So that's what we're looking into, the mechanism for creating that.
So in her, and I'm sure there's others, but in her particular case, we're looking to restrict truck activity there, certain size, certain wheels, etc.
Yes, sir. It would be an axle restriction, so any large 18-wheeler truck size would have a restriction to travel down the local street, so.
What's the process for that, and how long does that take?
That's what, that's what staff's looking into, is exactly what the mechanism is, whether that's a staff, where we put in place assignment, or whether the City Manager or Council has to authorize that restriction. So once we get that mechanism figured out, we'll bring it back to the appropriate party to get it enacted.
Member Stokel.
Yep. Just to clarify, because I heard you say that's the minimum. If I recall, I think your biggest issue was that the truck is blocking you to go in.
The thing is, and I've said it numerous times, they brought a FedEx freight truck, not a box truck, which I would even kind of be okay with, because at least with the side buffer zones, we can get our car past a box truck. I don't want a box truck on the street, but at the minimum, that should be what, but a freight truck, a FedEx freight truck that makes huge freight deliveries. And they paved the alleyway, they paved and cut across the street to build a sidewalk, to build their own loading and unloading zone across the street in order to make it easier for them to get freight deliveries.
So do you think what, I think what staff is saying, that they are looking to try to make that not allowed? It's just, I think, would solve your issue?
Yes, and but in that time, because what the code enforcement said when I first came here, a large, two large limbs were cut off a specimen oak tree, which is a protected species that has provided shade, and I will tell you, in the past week and a half since that's been cut, and they said, oh, we're going to come clear out your alleyway. It's been a week and a half, and it's still not cleared out, you know? But also, because we don't have that shade and that protection from that limb anymore that has been there since at least 2007 in the Google Maps, the heat from the direct sunlight has heated up my house, which is going to increase my electrical bills.
Okay, so you have the two separate issues then?
Yes, yes, because they didn't know that I have been here trying to get a restriction on, and that you guys were looking to get a restriction on. And because the business, because when code owners came and gave us that first sheet that I have right there, when code owners came and gave that ordinance to us, it had street maintenance's number at the bottom. They gave it to us and the business. The business came, called street, the street maintenance, because it was at the bottom of the number to come and cut it off, even though my husband went in the back and started trimming it off, that at least if it was like a trailer, storage trailer height, that you kind of attached to like a truck, you could get by? You know, like to cut it to at least like eight to 10 feet? Then, and that happened a week and a half ago. Even though I've been here for three months, because there was no sort of coordination between the city and street maintenance going, hey, we're actually in this fight right now.
Gotcha.
And a limb that has been there since 2007 that created shade for my property and lowered my electrical bills, because I will tell you, it is so hot on the side of my house right now, because I don't have the shade from that tree. Even if they had trimmed it to 10 feet, which is where the electrical lines about are over the middle of the street, the lowest electrical lines, you know, it still would have created enough shade to not upping my electrical bill right now.
Yeah, okay. Well, hopefully, we'll get the, I mean, we can't go back and change the
I understand, and it's because it is a live oak, and the way they grow, they grow out and down, which means you guys are going to be having this fight for a while, which means you're going to be cutting higher and higher branches on the live oak. That is, when I did the math according to breast height and everything like that, it is 24 inches in diameter. That is a specimen oak tree. It is, according to the calculator, which is not exactly correct, 92 years old.
Wow.
Wow.
Okay.
Member Nelson. I'm sorry.
I'm hopeful too, because it's a safety issue. When it comes down to it, freight trucks, freight trucks, that when Gwendolyn, my daughter, came to me and said, Mom, there's a big truck outside. I was expecting a box truck. When I walked out my property and I passed by three windows, and all I see is truck, 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 because the truck is the same length as my entire house.
That's too big.
Yeah.
I remember Nelson.
Have a question. Enforcement, how do we enforce this? So you get an ordinance, or you get the signs put up, says, no, no trucks in this area, no trucks going down that road. What is the enforcement process?
That's what staff will have to take a look at, is whether enforcement is code enforcement or if it's police department. I'm not sure which is inactable there, so.
Okay.
It's the safety of my kid, and I actually, I actually watched over another child all during the summertime, because she, a friend is a working mom. So I had, I had two elementary-age kids in my backyard, which a freight truck can back up less than, you only have a two-foot buffer. It's less than two feet from my property, my whole entire backyard, that you're saying, basically, your code ordinance and everything like that, is that a freight truck can back up. So I don't feel safe letting my kids play in the backyard.
Flash, Mayor.
Yes, please, some pictures. I know the area.
Yeah, I know you do, sir, yes.
Is these your cars parked in the front of your driveway here?
That, I park directly in the street, indirectly there, so that you could see how low the wire was versus where a passenger vehicle is.
Okay, and on the opposite side, on the west side of the alleyway, we'll call it today, is they have put a fence, a wooden fence along that?
Yes, and this is my question also, because according to neighborhood plans, the commercial property should be putting in buffer zones between the commercial and the residence. But because it's a city street, they don't have to put in buffer zones when they build a new fence.
Okay, the other question I have, even your neighbors to the west, the first, right across the street.
The one that's being used as a residential?
The one that's being used, not along the north of our side, but directly west, on the other side of your car, right here.
Yeah, where the residential is, yes.
Is someone living in that?
Yes, it is, and they have been for years.
They're not complaining?
No, they have been to me, but they're renters, and so they don't feel that they have as much power as we do, as property owners.
Okay, but evidently, you're the only property owner that, have they contacted the ladies that own that property there? And told them about the concern?
No, but if you want me to, I absolutely can contact the neighboring property owner.
As you build a case, is that you get the other neighbors to do something?
Because they're renters have
Yeah, the renters, yeah, fine, the renters don't have no ground to do anything, but they can go to the owner of the property and say that these are the concerns that are happening in our area.
The, actually, the neighbor is the one who sold us our property, so I'm sure that I can, I can absolutely go to her if that is something that the city would like.
Go with the ladies, that's why I said the ladies, go with the ladies, and talk about that, and get some, compile some information with that, and the fence would probably be some concern. So put a good package together, and so that the staff can
And that's something that I had mentioned earlier to whoever I spoke to the first time, is they had built a new fence, and if it's a new construction, why is it not built to what the neighborhood plan says? You know, which is that it has to have a better buffering zone between the commercial and residential. And my thought of that was, well, because it's a city street, and they're going, oh, well, it's a city street, so they can have two entrances, which is what your code ordinance has said, is two entrances for a street unless it's a corner lot. You know, so.
In your survey line, and at the, where the street began, that street?
No, no, they're
Where is your survey line?
It's about two feet off from where the pavement is, on either side. So the property owner is on
And what puts it at your kitchen door?
No, no, it doesn't.
Okay.
No. Where the oak tree is, that's basically where the property line is.
Okay. That's what I would suggest, that you get with the owners, and you know them, they're very wonderful ladies.
Oh, yeah, no, they were so happy to sell a house to a young couple with a young kid, and honestly, we love our neighborhood. We intend to stay there, you know, for the rest of our lives. We intend to raise our daughter there, and then when we pass, I'm going to give her the house. You know, this might be generations in a historic neighborhood that you have. But honestly, with the street and how it's built, not a lot of people want to buy that property.
Just your explanations, and I certainly don't disagree with Vice Mayor, that getting some of the other neighbors. For me, I've heard enough, and even, and I'm sure they'll all be on the same page, but I think that, talking to Kevin over there, I'd like to see trucks stop going through there. I think it eliminates 90% of your problems.
It really is.
Now, my question, of course, you always wonder, now, you've come to us with that, because quite honestly, I didn't know anything about that. Wouldn't know anything about that if you didn't come to us. How long has this gone on that's never been brought this way?
We've lived there for four and a half years. There have been four different business owners on that property in the four and a half years that we've lived here. The first one, they're the ones who had the dead-end car at the end of the street. They were actually able to pull the dead-end car through with the way that we park and everything, because we leave. It's actually safer for us to back straight out than try to pull and maneuver around. But we leave a 10- to 12-foot lane, so people can get back and behind. The second neighbors, they actually called the cops on us, because they weren't able to get large trucks by. The police came and said that the way that the street is set up, there is no way for large trucks to get through. The third neighbors were actually local neighbors. They understood everything. They still brought a large truck through at one point in the back of the property. I want to say in the four and a half years that we've lived there, at least once, every business has tried to bring a large truck back there.
But it's gotten a little more enhanced, perhaps?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm
Ever since the city said to them, because what happened was, my husband can probably tell you, he actually has a speech as well. He's coming to talk to you guys too today. Maybe two, three weeks ago, they tried again to bring a FedEx truck down. They weren't able to, I guess. The code enforcement said it is up to the FedEx driver and how good they feel their driving skills are.
No, I'll just leave it that alone. Kevin, can you guys, have you guys been together at all in this? Because I would like to have you guys communicate, and she gets an idea of what's going on, and I'd like to know what's going on as far as the progress of this. going on, and I'd like to know what's going on as far as the progress of this, or how long it's gonna take. I'm sure all council would like to know. And then come next month, if she comes up, she can say, well, Kevin and I have talked, this is where we're at, et cetera.
I will tell you, I have been up nights, this has ruined my sleep schedule, it is worrying, we don't work normal Monday through Friday jobs. I, I've probably waited on half of you in, in this room, you know? We're home actually three days a week, Monday through Friday, and every single time, nine through five, three days a week, we're worried that a freight truck is gonna back up while our kid is at home. And, and the two days that we're not there, we're worried that it's gonna back up when we're not there and cause damage, and then we come home and we're like, what happened?
All right, well, I think that, I don't want to say what everybody else agrees, but I will simply say that I definitely think we need to make a move on this, and I think that Kevin is gonna work on that, and I just need to know there's communication going on. So with that, I think that the next person, if they're coming up, should probably be your husband to keep on the same topic.
Yes, and, 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 and I'm, I'm going to warn you, you know, he's an artist, so he can be a, a little more wordful and fluent than I.
Okay, that's good. Oh, sorry. That was a weird intro, I don't think you need to be too worried. Andrew Villan, 236 Acorn Drive. I did write more from the feelings point of view, and I'm a, you know. For three months, my family has been attending Titusville City Council meetings. It's not because it beats hanging around the house, because I can assure you that it does not. Our presence here has been very specifically for issues pertaining to the abandoned alleyway, excuse me, official Titusville City Street that runs the entire length of our property, both the front and backyard. The alleyway, or Titusville City Street, that for as long as any past photograph show has had the added cover of our huge live oak, which is approximately 100 years old and listed as environmentally protected, yet city maintenance showed up unannounced on July 28th and chopped off a huge amount of it. The limbs that served as a home to numerous birds and squirrels and offered shade and privacy to us. Now, I'm definitely not here for the third time, because I want to be. I'm here for my daughter's safety, I'm here for my wife, who because of the poor judgments of our commercial neighbors and continued lack of resolution, has continued to stand before you, asking for guidance. She's now spoken in front of you three times, and instead of the situation finding resolution the first time, we had the runaround from the code enforcement officer stating that it sure is an awkward situation in person, but it says this on paper, so tough luck. Instead of the situation finding resolution the second time, we received no follow-up at all, aside from an unannounced tree butchering. As my wife has now stood here before this tribunal of tabling three times, I have no question that if she and I and our daughter continue to have the driveway blocked and our safety disregarded and our property destroyed, I have no question we'll be right back here again, and maybe each time, we can get another business card from someone else, a new card every meeting to find out whose hands are tied. We can just keep our city employee business card collection going, gotta catch them all, I guess. But seriously, I just really don't want to be continuing to do this every month. I first moved here in 1989, and prior to this, had only ever been to three city council meetings. I've never asked for anything in the past, so it's been frustrating to keep asking for something reasonable, such as that size and weight restriction or literally anything to prevent large vehicles unnecessarily using and damaging the roadway along with the property when they have no need to be there. So here's to hoping the third time's a charm. It sure would be nice to feel that the city was looking out for its citizens' best interests, and it would be an added bonus to not have to stand here and keep repeating myself, because in case you missed it, I'd much rather not be here. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Come on up.
Mind if I move this down?
Absolutely.
This is for you, Dan Pies. I was coming up here.
You named an address for the.
Oh, yeah, I forgot to tell you who I was. I'm Dan Lewis, 3525 Palmer Drive, here in town, and I don't think I really need three minutes, because I just wanted to come up here and plant a seed in your minds. If you know my address, would you do now? You know, I'm in Royal Oak, and there are changes on the horizon, as I'm sure you're all aware of, and our no rezoning signs. But the, the, I've been spending a lot of time trying to read and understand this new law that's out there, the Live Local law, and I don't know how much you guys have read it, I've spent a few hours on it, and to tell you the truth, there's an awful lot I don't know. And I'm not a planner, like Brad over there, I'm not an attorney, like Mr. Broom, but I, I did read into the law, and, you know, we have this prospective rezoning issue coming up with Royal Oak, because you can't build all those apartments on that land without changing the zoning. But one of the things that concerned me about this Live Local is that it's a real game changer, and it's a game changer in that, right now, the majority of that land is zoned conservation and recreational, is my understanding and looking at the zoning maps. And neither of those categories are part of the Live Local Act. So therefore, you know, you have the right then to do with that land pretty much whatever you want as far as zoning goes. If you change that zoning to any one of the four categories that are covered by the Live Local Act, then all of a sudden, all of that jurisdiction you have, any ordinances you have, any zoning requirements you have, any of that stuff is just absolutely null and void. You have absolutely no control whatsoever. So I, I would like you to keep in mind, that's the consequence of changing the zoning. That doesn't mean it's necessarily bad to do something there, but I think it deserves more than a cursory view, because once you change that to residential, once you change it to commercial, once you change it to mixed use, whatever you want, then whoever the developer is, whether it's Tulon or it's somebody else down the road, they may sell too, anyway, they, they can do pretty much darn well whatever they want, whether you like it or not. And I was part of this survey that, oop, okay.
Hold up one second, I'll go to you first, Member Nelson.
Okay. Dan, I think there, in talking to the city attorney.
Could you speak up?
Yeah. In talking to the city attorney.
Yeah.
It appears there's a new statute, which really prohibits, prohibits us from changing or increasing a burden to a property owner. So it looks like we can't change it even if we want to. I did want to look at our old proposed ordinance to see where we were. And to see if it was something that might be feasible, or there might be interest in it, because right now, we have a golf course that, I understand, has snakes and rats, and it's fairly undesirable.
Well, not really. You know, if you take a look, and I, I presented some pictures, or online, or stopped the rezoning site, all that, you know, there are some parts of it I'm sure that fall into that category. And I, I guarantee you, the part that we have doesn't, because it looks beautiful out there.
Okay, okay.
You know, so it, it's not really blight, I mean, it'd be nice to say it wasn't, if it was, well then, say la vie.
I wouldn't say it was blight, but.
Okay.
It's not being maintained, I guess is a better way of putting it.
Yeah, well, actually, our part is, but in any case, the thing is, if you change, if you, if you were to bring up that zoning thing again, and that golf course idea, which, which wasn't necessarily a bad idea, there's some good aspects to that, but the problem really is, not, not that that's a bad idea, the problem is that once you change that zoning in there, yeah, you're off the, you're off the block. I mean, there, there's nothing you can do about it. I mean, Tulon could come in and build shacks in there, and as long as it meets the requirements, you're all set.
I would agree. I was also somewhat concerned, because it is conservation, and we do have, I understand, some wetlands going in there.
Yeah, there is.
So that would concern me, because.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of concerns. It, it's not a simple cut and dry deal, that's all I'm saying. And I, you know, I'm making it my, my mission to know as much about this Live Local law as I can.
Yeah.
And it, it takes a real study, because it's not only the law, I mean, it's not only what you read, but it's also the implications of what you read.
Yes.
And a lot of times, the thought is good and the spirit is good in these things, but then when you start thinking about the potential implications, somebody who's not, as long as you're thinking along the lines of a positive thing, you're okay, but not everybody thinks that way, and the Live Local law, since it takes all the control out of your hands.
And we don't want to lose control.
What's that?
We don't want to lose control.
Well, that's, that's just it, and if you lose control of it, then it doesn't matter what you think, it doesn't matter what your ordinance is, it doesn't matter what you thought you should zone it as. The problem is, now it becomes up in the air, and it could be any dang thing you want, as long as you have the affordable housing component.
Right, I agree with you.
And so, you know, I'm not here to take all day on this, but, but the bottom line is, I think that it's something we should all work together on, to try to come up with, with a solution that's, that's viable for everybody, and that's gonna actually enhance the community, because I, I, I helped Kathleen with that survey, and, and you'll see when we meet with you on that. But the deal is, that as citizens of this community, and there's an awful lot of them, 49,000 registered voters, as a matter of fact, but out of all those registered voters, you know, there's this, I, I won't share it now, but there's a significant, a significant part of them that feel a certain way that you ought to know about.
Okay.
All right, so that's it.
Well, thank you for your, your words, I'm glad to hear from you. Secondly, Brad, is there anything you want to say, at least on the, the, the possible, possibility that we have no control? And secondly, we're, we're speaking as though we have some sort of rezoning in front of us, and to my knowledge, there is absolutely nothing with rezoning, no one's asked for rezoning, no one's turned anything in, that's what the word I get, there's nothing out there for us to even think about rezoning.
We do not have a rezoning application in process, we've not received anything, and in reference to the Senate Bill 250, we're still reviewing that bill and trying to understand it.
But our, anybody's rezoning of anything doesn't necessarily affect that bill, because they can, if, if some developer comes in and says that they're looking to do affordable housing, then they can override us in a lot of ways.
If you're referring to the Live Local Act.
I'm sorry.
That specifically references allowing affordable housing projects on commercially-zoned, industrially-zoned, and mixed-use zone pieces of property. The Royal Oaks property has, as already stated, conservation and, I'm sorry, open space and recreation and recreational zoning on it, which I don't think would apply, so I'm not sure, I didn't read from the Live Local Act that.
Right now, with the zoning, the way it is, the Live Local doesn't apply to it. But if you change it to zoning for high density or anything that meets those four criteria named in that law, then it does fall under the auspices of that, in which case, then city of Titusville loses all control.
Very good.
But you, I wouldn't think you would want to be in that position.
Well, that's, a lot of positions the state puts in.
Yeah, the implications of that law are really extreme, you know?
I would simply say, from our point, and I think we've said that from the diocese before, when it first came down, when we first heard about it, we're, the, I gotta be careful how Tallahassee takes everything I say, but the bottom line is, they have this tendency, I'm sorry, they have this tendency to want to take control and, and local governments be, you know, deescalated.
Well, you know, you want control, because you want to represent the citizens and have it the way that people here like. Tallahassee has a whole different idea, you know, and so, you know, I, I, I think that, at least in my opinion, and I can only give you mine, but, you know, Ron DeSantis doesn't have to live here, I do.
Absolutely.
You know, he lives in Tallahassee, which is hundreds of miles away from here, looking to live in Washington DC, which is thousands of miles away. So, you know, I, I think that I would rather have, I'd rather seek local control over local places, to the extent that we're able to do that. And so I wanted to just express the idea that I think you have to be really, really careful and tread very lightly here, to make sure you don't accidentally put yourself in a situation where you're gonna now, all of a sudden, be controlled by them, rather than you control the land.
Well said, thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
Yes, sir.
People are gonna leave, because I'm gonna speak.
I'll stop them.
Stan Johnson, I'd like to speak about, a little bit about Royal Oak, is that when there was, started the idea about somebody buying it, I was, spoke forward and said, why doesn't the city buy it? And I had a few people that were also looking that way, and we didn't buy it, could have bought it for a song. And, and I say a song, because the way the budget we have, the way we're spending millions and millions and millions of dollars, is we could have, the city could have easily bought it and prevented a lot of, of, let's say, misery and victims of this, what's gonna happen. So what I'm here to talk about is something I've spoke, spoke about at least 30 times in the last two years, the public meetings. And you don't, you, if you, if you don't want to hear me again, I would like you to do something about it, because you're not doing anything about it. And that is SNJ Oaks. And in XNJ Oaks, there are victims, there are victims, and you're not listening to me, because one of the biggest victims is the, the owner of the project. Let me show you what I got here. I got six, six posters. There's one. Two. Three. Four. Five. That's the owner's victim. And six, there's six posters. And I said, like, I've been speaking at least 30, 30 public meetings in the last two years, and, and two years ago, is what I did, is I even made a complaint to the board, the survey board, about the survey, it was just so bad, so bad. And then in February, which was over, over, well over a year ago, February last year, is I even filed a, with a court affidavit that the survey was not just erroneous, but it's fake. So we've got, we've got a lot of victims here, and I've even represented victims here, and what did the city do? Closed doors on me. Closed doors, it wouldn't answer the phone, wouldn't respond. So I don't know how do you expect somebody to, to do my business, in other words, as a professional engineer, when the city doesn't respond? Fire department stopped responding too. Let me read something to you that I sent to you July the 25th, it says, number one, relocation, relocation of existing Mockingbird Lane, 26-foot wide, cleared area of two-way traffic, now it's being changed to 12 feet wide. It has a, currently it has a 12-foot wide concrete apron that's gonna be changed to 12 feet, that's ridiculous. And it's, it's, it was based upon the false preposition by the city, that the property owners have no legal access to their property, this is in violation of Florida Statute 704, survey law, prescriptive law, common law. I'd like another minute on this. Okay, you'll hear me again.
I see none, all right.
You'll hear me again.
Thank you.
No thanks to you guys, because you're not doing your job.
Anybody else? Yep. Hi.
Hello, Stelvelli Coco, environmental health advocate. I want to thank the Public Works Director for promptly addressing the pollution notice and effectively communicating the results of the sewage testing at Scobie Park on the Indian River Lagoon. I received reports from several individuals expressing concerns about potential health risks and the decline in water quality in the area. They reported experiencing various symptoms such as digestive problems, diarrhea, respiratory issues, headaches, and bacterial and urinary tract infections. Some individuals just passed through and did not even go near the water or shoreline. A few even complained of sewage-like taste in their mouth. The city advises this area is not for swimming purposes, however, there is no signage advising visitors of that. Sewage in the water can cause harmful blooms that produce cyanobacteria, producing airborne toxins that cause severe illness. This area is frequently visited by vulnerable population of senior citizens and tourists who come to watch rocket launches, putting the bet risk of these environmental exposures. Additionally, the neglected shoreline, which should be thriving, is disgraceful. As an elected official, it is your duty to gain knowledge on these subjects. It is crucial to question your staff, including the city manager, to ensure the proper research and due diligence have been carried out. In the past, issues related to sewage and health were frequently ignored, overlooked, or even denied, hence past, I use the word past. We would often hear statements like, this is all we are required to do, or someone else is accountable, not us. The council avoids responsibility by relying on external agencies like the FDIP and shifting blame. There needs to be a proactive approach to finding solutions to reduce risk. If there is even a small amount of sewage in a public pool, it would be closed. If there is even a small amount of sewage in a public pool, it would be closed down immediately. Unfortunately, the same standard does not apply to waterways where people fish and swim, but the city can implement measures to ensure transparency. I'm requesting that the city do the following. Install a Gator Bite, a technology available to the city for a thousand bucks, a thousand dollars. It provides real-time water quality data that can help identify areas of stress and potential risks, allowing the city to prepare and protect vulnerable areas in case of a break. This tool is one of a kind with the ability to provide crucial data. Fight for Zero, my nonprofit organization, is willing to maintain and operate this. Put up signs to remind people to be careful and stay safe in the area. Put in turbidity curtains to reduce and stop sewage from entering the lagoon. Televise the Titusville Environmental Commission meetings where citizens can access these environmental discussions. Huge on education, huge on way of connecting with the community. Take action on the TEC's suggestions for cleaning up the shorelines. Publish all test and surface water quality criteria chart to the city website and social media account. May I have one just, I only have just a little bit more?
Yeah, absolutely.
Provide regular updates throughout the Forest Main Project, even during construction-related disruptions, including breaks, to ensure that residents receive all necessary information from the city directly. I'm trying to get the city to communicate with the community directly. Distribute educational information on harmful algae blooms to raise awareness and safeguard health. And lastly, I know Titusville is facing some unique issues that demand more effort to tackle the water quality concerns compared to the neighboring regions down south. I acknowledge the difficulties and believe the city can enhance its reputation through collaborative efforts and ample resources.
Thank you. Real quick, you said, and I missed it, I couldn't understand it. Install a something pipe?
Gator bite.
Gator.
Gator bite, from UF.
Oh, explains that. Go, go, no.
It's a thousand dollars.
Anything else, I remember Stokoe.
Yep. Could you email that list of requests? That's very helpful. Oftentimes, we all get complaints, but then it's like, there's only so much we can do, limited resources and whatnot. But you brought up several things. I am definitely with you on the transparency. I know we've published results in the past. I'm not sure if we've published the recent ones or not, but if you could provide that list, that way I can go over it with staff and then we can discuss and see, maybe as a city council as a whole, to see what we can get done on there.
Absolutely. And again, I want to thank Kevin Cook. You've been tremendous in your communication.
Yeah, and I thank you. Thank you to Kevin. Yeah, I too, there was a list, and I don't know if you can get it to all of us or how that worked. But I certainly agree, where signage is needed, signage is needed. And I don't know all where signage is needed, but there certainly could be some places where, hey, don't go swimming here.
Just a simple notice.
Yeah.
So it takes...
I'm going to look into that gator pipe. I don't...
Absolutely. Anything else?
Kevin, anything?
No, we can, we have a number of improvements we're working on for early warning, monitoring of the sewer system. So we certainly can bring that back to the council and share it. As far as posting additional testing results, we can expand that. We do for the water side through the CCNR, we do disclose all testing on the water plant side. We can expand that to surface water and wastewater. That's not a problem, so.
And this might be a good place to at least throw it out there. I'm not trying to make you stay there all day, but hold on one second. We started a new project today that I think is real important that would relate to this. Do you want to say that, or does Kevin want to say that?
Sure. It's all over the website about where we're starting, when.
Hey, what, tell me what that does exactly. What's it called again?
It's a Forest Main replacement project that runs from the South Street lift station up to Osprey Plant.
And what that basically does is move our sewer pipes away from the river further away. Correct? Okay, make sure I get correct on it. So I like a lot of what we're doing.
Right. Will you be transparent if there's a break with that, with that site and with that information?
I don't get to do that report. I can tell you that every time there's been any issue at all, city manager does let us know something was going on. Kevin, go ahead.
Yes, we can, we can notify the public if there's any reportable spill during that. If you recall during the B and R construction, we had two spills related to the contractor work at the Osprey facility. They both were reported through the pollution notice. We can make sure that that similar notice is hung on the city's website if that were to be an occurrence.
Very good.
I think that's extremely important. And thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I'm not...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have to stand there. But I was going to add, also, DEP is monitoring the river, correct, at the bridge? Or did I read that wrong?
No, there's a number of monitoring stations out. For this specific location, I contact DEP with updates regularly since we are under a consent order. So that makes any impacts to the river for the city a higher priority. So we have an environmental specialist at DEP we contact for any impact that could be related to that consent order. So Ms. Hall's been updated throughout the process of our testing and provide our test results and inspection information as the process has progressed.
So I think the continuous monitoring station that you're referring to, that's St. John's, and that's over by the bridge. And then we, we have the DEP algae bloom task force that's testing as well?
Yeah, those are grab samples. That's not a monitoring system. That's an on-demand grab sampling. There are a number, and as a matter of fact, I think One Lagoon presents later this week on some of the collaborative monitoring on the lagoon. We can, we can make sure city manager has that information for it. I know Sandy was reviewing that today.
Thank you.
They're monitoring, a lot of the, a lot of the sampling of this nature is a grab sample, not a continuous monitorable. So to be clear, the tests we ran are not something that can be run through a continuous monitoring system.
Okay.
All right. Next petitions and requests, people.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Elizabeth Baker. I'm doing well. How are you?
Good.
Elizabeth Baker. I live here in Titusville. And I want to say also, thank you, Mr. Cook. You've been kind of a huge breath of fresh air in the way that you've been handling things, and we really appreciate it. Ms. Bailey just brought up the Gator Bites. I know that it keeps being brought up about monitoring systems, but the Gator Bite isn't actually, it's a completely different technology. It gives you more real-time data and different data, so it's definitely worth looking into. Now, I want to talk about Scobie Park for a moment. Just a couple things that I feel could really, really help in that area, because it is supposed to be a living shoreline, and I don't see a lot alive over there. The plastic, however, is thriving. It's doing great. So a couple things are, one is, I don't think that the workers going out there are getting any real environmental education. It was me going out to that park and monitoring that situation that has been going on for several weeks now. I am not a scientist. I'm not a biologist. I'm just a regular old person. And I could look at that water and tell you there was something very wrong. I didn't know what was wrong, but I knew something was wrong. So I feel like it would be a really, really good thing to educate the workers so that they're on the front lines, out in the field. They're out there mowing the parks and doing the things that need to be done in our city, to give them a little bit of a heads up so that they can come back and report to their superiors when they see something wrong. They've mowed that park several times. Unfortunately, I did see situations where some of the garbage was just mowed over and left behind. And there really has been no attempt to remove all of the trash from the edge of the water line, which is pretty upsetting. One of the things that could also be done is to just simply not mow. Leave six feet by the water's edge. What we will find is that, yeah, some of the trash is washing up in the river, but all the trash that's blowing over from the downtown area is going to get caught right there at the edge. Not only that, but all of that grass, if you just let it grow, is going to uptake some of that pollution, and it won't be as bad of a problem as we have going on. It was mentioned in the last meeting that there was no need for monitoring what was going into the river. This situation is exactly why we need constant testing. We have an aging infrastructure under this city. What is going on today may not be true tomorrow. Even a hairline crack in a pipe could create a real problem if it's getting into the stormwater. So monitoring those situations would be really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin, can you comment on the monitoring of things going into the river? I mean, give me an idea of what we do or what we can do or...
What we do is we respond to any, any staff, citizen, any request for investigation, we respond to. So, you know, in occurrences in which we do have overflowing manholes or lift stations, we do test beyond whatever water body, like just say the river, because if it's an impact away from the river, we also test. But we do test, we do grab sampling through our internal lab. We do external lab sampling when we need to. As far as a constant monitoring setup, we currently do not have that. So there's, there's two parameters there. One is monitoring the sanitary sewer system, and one would be monitoring the stormwater system. The stormwater system's a carrier system. Whatever's on the ground, whatever's in the road, whatever in your yard is going to carry through the stormwater system. So that's one location you could monitor and test. The other side is monitoring what the sewer infrastructure is doing itself. We do have monitoring of the sewer infrastructure. We do monitor its flowability, the pumps running, the whether it has power, inflowing flow meters. Can that system be improved? Yes, and we are looking at some improvements specifically to that system. Likewise, as far as checking for cracks in old infrastructure, we're looking at some technology advancements on the Forest Main side to be able to float sensors through the Forest Main that will check those for pipe thickness and cracks or air pockets. So we are improving those, but currently we do not have an active monitoring system for a sewer influx into a storm drain, if that's... So we are reactive to that, that situation.
Without a seminar, I found that interesting. What do you think about not mowing down there?
We do mow a lot of places in the downtown because the expectation is that the grass gets mowed. That park is set up well not to be mowed down near the river because the seating areas, the walkable space is on a higher platform than the lower. It certainly can be placed in, it's not irrigated, so it's going to be essentially a behemoth field that takes over. But it can be, certainly can be removed from the mowing cycle. The pond would probably, the smaller retention area would still be mowed down some. It's actually been planted, I think, twice. The pond air has neither time that they survive. But we can, we can certainly take a look at that, limiting the mowing. We still need to mow and edge the top areas near the roadway and near the travel area. But I think we can, we can always pile it in, not mowing down the downslope of that, that area.
Well, I think that was interesting. Well, I think that's, that's interesting. Thank you. Thank you. Next up. I saw her popping over there. He was, I haven't seen her. Haven't seen her without a cast in a long time. Her and Woody can have a race.
So it, Laurlee Thompson, 3550 Urban Avenue MEMS. And it's time for your annual present of the annual Indian River Lagoon National Estuary Program Report. So you can see all of the, all of the different projects that they're working on. And hopefully, Titusville, we've never applied for one of their grants before, but I keep hoping. So maybe someday. So at the, at the management board meeting today, we learned that seagrass coverage in the Southern Mosquito Lagoon is now greater than ninety percent. A hundred percent total recovery of seagrass in Mosquito Lagoon. And where 500 manatees normally spend the summer, there's more than a thousand manatees that are happily feasting on new seagrass there in Mosquito Lagoon. Along the east side of the northern Indian River, by the Wildlife Refuge, seagrass coverage has increased to seventy percent. On the west side of the Indian River by Titusville, the seagrass coverage is less than ten percent. So if you look at the pictures that I gave you, on the, on the first one in the top left-hand picture, you can see muck in the making at Scobie Park as the detritus is relentlessly chewed up by the waves that grind it into tiny pieces that blend into the water column. And detritus is organic matter that's mostly made up of leaves. It's mostly water combined with clay, silt, sand, and shell along with twenty-five percent organic matter. By comparison, the natural sediment in the river is less than one percent organic matter. Muck is insidious. It settles into the deepest places and waits for the wind to blow and stir it up and spread it out and smother the seagrass, and that makes more muck. Nothing can live in muck, not worms, not clams, not seagrass. It's anaerobic. It has no oxygen. And Scobie Park is a muck-producing factory. In May of 2021, volunteers cleaned off the beach at Scobie Park. We raked the leaves into piles, and Kevin was kind enough to send down city workers. They came with a bucket truck and scooped up the piles and put them in a truck and hauled them away. Horseshoe crabs immediately started spawning on the white sandy beach once the detritus was removed. Shorebirds and waiting birds came to eat their eggs. And the people that came to the shore were so happy to see a sandy beach instead of a big pile of detritus. Later on, on the night of January 5th, and that's in the bottom right-hand side of that first page, more than a thousand horseshoe crabs spawned on that little tiny beach. I was beside myself. It was pitch black, dark, and there they were piled on top of each other the entire length of the beach. So the second set of pictures, that shows you what Scobie Park beach looked like two weeks ago when the river was low. The water level was actually lower than I've ever seen at this time of the year. And it would have been easy to clean up.
Are you done? You need another minute?
I can be done. I could have another minute if you want to give it to me.
Another minute, please.
Another minute?
Okay. All right. So horseshoe crabs didn't spawn there this year. The ones that did came, you know, that tried to spawn ended up dead, you know? And people just piled them up on the beach because they can't reach the sand. I see that we are about to spend a million dollars on a downtown riverfront walkway project. Well, I hope that cleaning up the shoreline at Scobie Park will be a part of our downtown riverfront walkway project. Because why would you spend a million dollars on a riverfront walkway and have it go by something that looks like the beach at Scobie Park? We have an asset here that other cities would love to have, and they would take care of it. And you have hundreds of people that come to Scobie Park to watch rocket launches, and that is what they see when they come. So what kind of impression does that give them of our town? So we have a crown jewel for downtown Titusville in Scobie Park, and it needs to be put on a regular maintenance cleanup schedule. Thank you.
I'm Mr. Nelson. Hold up. You need her?
No, she can...
Okay, you can go.
I know how to find her.
Okay, go ahead.
So we took some of the money, remember last year, the plastic plants? And we said that was what we were going to use for landscaping. Can we take part of that and use it for the maintenance of Scobie Park? I mean, the landscaping town downtown looks beautiful, but is that a possibility?
I'm not sure who to ask there, Kevin or city manager.
Normally, CRA maintenance funds are restricted to CRA improvements. So if the CRA did not improve the property, then the CRA can't expand maintenance funds on it. So what we're, what we're doing right now with the landscaping is on the US-1 corridor, which the CRA paid to improve. So we apply maintenance funds to those areas that the CRA improved for the CRA maintenance, separating the two sources of funding there, the general fund, obviously.
Question, Kevin? And maybe I'm wrong, but we're turning around and we have people going down and weeding those areas along Indian River Avenue and some of the other areas. What budget does that come out of?
The CRA paid for that improvement in your river when we put in the separate between the bike lane and the roadway. So the employee that weeds that, and it's one employee named Willie, he weeds that, that's a CRA employee.
Okay. So can the CRA employee sort of expand his scope up?
To Scobie Park? No, because it wasn't approved by the CRA. But if you're asking for general fund resources to be expended there, then that's something we could look at.
Okay. Because, yeah, Laurlee's got a point. I mean, if the beach looks like that and we have a lot of people coming and we're spending the money on the, our bridge, we want it to look nice. So...
I agree. I do. And Kevin, I appreciate your effort. I appreciate Willie's effort. I'd like to see what we can do about throwing Scobie Park into there on a regular basis. And I'm sure you're there on a regular basis, but anything we can do. Nobody else? More petitions or requests?
Can I, can I...
Yes, come on up. Come up here through the microphone so they can hear you on TV. Come on, come on.
I own the business across from Scobie Park. Right now it's called RocketCityEntertainment.com. And I got to tell you, I don't know what's going on with that park, but it's so disgusting. I'm having clients come to see my venue, and they're basically walking away because of the smell. Laurlee was dead on, it's, it's a mess, you know? And to see the park cleaned up would be amazing. I think it's a beautiful park. The park opened right after I started my company. my company. I think we got an opportunity to bring visitors to town. I'm hoping to grow my business here in Titusville and make it, you know, get into a little more tourism and stuff of that nature as well.
You know, we get close to that microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm used to talking loud. But, as I said, I would love to see the park cleaned up personally, and I would encourage the city to definitely look into whatever means that would take. And I want to add to that, that I would personally be willing to go out and volunteer time if something could be put together to do that as well.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Very important, definitely. Anyone else? I see none. City Manager?
Mayor Diesel, I have two cards. I believe it's for petitions. It's Leslie Williams?
I don't know.
And Carol Copeland? They're not going to speak? Okay.
Am I good? Okay, City Manager.
Okay, we're on to consent agenda items. City Council, do you have any questions for staff on consent agenda items A through G? City Council, are there any agenda items that you'd like pulled for further discussion?
I see none.
Clerk, are there any cards for consent agenda items A through G?
Yes, sir. We have one individual.
Mayor, I'd like to read the consent agenda item titles for the record.
Thank you.
Consent agenda item 8A, approve and execute the 2023-2024 School Board of Brevard County School Resource Officer Program. Consent agenda item 8B, approve and execute the 2023-2024 Park Avenue Christian Academy Resource Officer Program. Consent agenda item 8C, approve and execute the 2023-2024 Sculptor Charter School Resource Officer Program. Consent agenda item D, approve the Economic Development Strategic Plan Update Project. Consent agenda item 8E, approve the change order for La Cita under drains and reallocation of ARPA funds for the stormwater projects. Consent agenda item 8F, approve the award of the contract for the downtown riverfront walkway project. And consent agenda item 8G, approve the citywide multifunctional office equipment leases.
All right. Counsel, any comments or questions? I see none. No other staff reports. Call the card.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston. I don't have much time, only three minutes, and I had several items I wanted to go over. So I'll cover... Basically, I want to cover 8F. And I have some objection to that because of what the city is doing, what the city is doing and what the city is not doing, and victims involved in what's going on the riverfront. And this also has to do with some comments that you just received about Scobie Park, that the city is not doing what it should do in this area. And not only in Scobie Park, but in Sandpoint Park and Spaceview Park, too. So in Spaceview Park is what we had, is we had a sewage spill. And what I did is I put a warning sign, a warning sign, over there at Spaceview Park, and the city of Titusville removed it, removed it without replacing it with anything. So we had spraying there at Spaceview Park, and when the wind blew and it was visible to many people, it just blew, and it blew on people and vehicles and so forth. And I also had this... But incidentally, so what I believe that the city is doing is this, and I'm talking especially about council and some other people, is that I am convinced that although God loves you, okay, is that I believe you will do just about anything you can do to hide cities' dirty laundry. And this case is the dirty laundry is the sewage spills that are unreported and so forth, and that's what's going on. That's the topic of the handout I gave you from the last meeting, which is the same as what I just gave to Wanda. So you have that report dated August the 7th of a sewage spill that the city continued to deny. Although city, what the city has done is they receive photos and videos.
Stan, what...
So in other words, I do not want, I do not want you to spend money on this project because you're wasting it and you should be spending on something else, like being truthful about the false reports that city managers involved in. You should be telling the truth, and you're not. You're not. It's obviously because I've just got photos and videos and so forth of this. The handout was August the 7th. Okay, that was a question. So I'm asking you to have some, not just sympathy for the victims involved, which is shown by this poster of sewage spray that you've seen many times, and you continue to ignore the health and safety and the welfare of the public, and you need to do it. You need to spend some money on safety and health, and you're not doing it. This is not doing it.
Thank you.
So I'm opposed to it. Thank you.
All right, we are without one.
Yeah, we got...
Oh, okay.
Any more? Record?
No more cards, right? Like to hold. Need to hold.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to accept all of the items on the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor, a second from Member Cole.
Mayor, if Councilmember Nelson is returning, I would wait for the vote for the return.
Yeah, I was just going to say that. I was just going to accept that, and I was just going to stretch it out. Then I was wondering if we could have our vote and wait on her, but I don't want to go anywhere. But if I'm going to just sit here, do I recess it? We're just going to sit here. I mean, we've had a little spill here, I think. So we're going to hold on. I don't want to do a 20-second recess. Anybody's birthday? No? Stan, your birthday? No. How many laps you swim today, Stan?
Last two days I've got over two miles. No, over three miles.
So that's the YMCA? How many laps is that?
Uh...
A lot.
Let's see. It's over 100. Around 120, 120.
Quarter mile.
I'd love to tell you my story about my swimming laps, but I don't have one.
It's 108.
All right, do I have everybody?
Yeah.
All right, let's slow that down there. We're going to go roll call vote while you sit down. And all right, we did not have a recess, so I don't need to bring us back in. City Clerk?
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yeah.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passed unanimously. Consent agenda passed unanimously. City Manager?
On to item 9A, which is ordinance number 302023, repealing section 11-379 solicitation in the right of way. The city attorney will read the ordinance for the record.
Ordinance number 302023, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by repealing section 11-379 solicitation on right-of-way, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions incorporation into the code, severability, and an effective date.
In 2021, through the enactment of laws of the state of Florida, significant amendments were made to Florida statute section 316.2045, obstruction of public streets, highways, and roads. The statute was amended to remove portions held unconstitutional by federal courts while preserving the state's interest in keeping the roadways safe. Pursuant to council's direction on 11 July 2023, staff has prepared the attached ordinance repealing section 11-379 and utilizing the county's ordinance for council's consideration.
All right. Counsel, anything on that? Call the card, please.
Stan Johnston?
Stan Johnston, is this quasi judicial?
No, not yet.
Oh, it's not quasi judicial. What I was going to say is that I have no questions about that. I mean, it sounds like it's doing better, improving it. And as a hitchhiker for many miles, I really do not want the people being restricted from allowing them to be picked up by people, so.
First of all, thank you for being on topic. Secondly, we talked about this. Just to clarify for you and anybody listening, because you had sat a couple of meetings in a row, you were hitchhiker, you were concerned about... And this has a lot to do with people stepping out in the street with their signs. And some people, I just actually saw it in Cocoa recently, I was at a stoplight and somebody came out and jumped up and started cleaning my windshield, and just things like that. So they're trying to keep some safety out there.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other card, counsel? Member Nelson?
I can make a motion.
I see nobody else to say anything, so go ahead.
Move to approve ordinance number 302023, repealing section number 11-379 solicitation on right-of-way.
Second.
Motion from Member Nelson, a second from Member Cole. Roll call vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes. Passed unanimously. City Manager?
On to item 9B, which is the right-of-way vacation number 1-2023, Broad Street, and the city attorney will read quasi judicial rules.
During the quasi judicial public hearing portion of this meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table at the entrance to the chamber. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, of all persons wishing to speak before city council signed an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Staff and applicants, ensure that all witnesses and yourselves that intend to speak have signed an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth, and provided those to the clerk.
Yes.
If there's anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on the quasi judicial items, please submit a card at this time. City clerk, of all agenda items, your property advertised.
Yes, sir.
In the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, either verbal or written, outside of this hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communications must be disclosed and made a part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted any investigations or site visits or received any expert opinions regarding the quasi judicial item, said visit or opinions shall be disclosed.
I have, to my knowledge, nothing.
I live in here. Yes, I pass it.
Nothing.
Nothing. All or nothing.
The applicant was submitted by Epic Consultants of Florida LLC, requesting the vacation of a portion of a public right-of-way on Broad Street. In your packet, that's described as Exhibit A. Staff recommends three conditions for approval. That's in your packet. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of right-of-way 1, 2023, as presented by staff recommendations, conditions, and subject to clarifying the point of the beginning of the easement running west 30 feet. The approval was 6-1. The no vote was because a member would have liked to seen a portion of the right-of-way designation for the extension of the bicycle trail. Mr. Parrish is here to provide any information that you may have on this vacation.
Anything you want to start with?
So Mayor, I do want to point you to a couple of exhibits on the attachment in your packet. On page 333, you'll see, that's 333 of your packet, you'll see an aerial that identifies the location of the right-of-way. It's a public right-of-way in the red box there on the aerial, again, on page 333 of your packet. It is an unimproved right-of-way. There is no improved street or alleyway or any sort whatsoever there. The applicant owns both sides, the north side and the south side of this public right-of-way. If it is vacated, it will be split between both sides. One of the conditions is asking that the property owner combine or do a unity of title of the parcels to the north so that we're not going to end up creating a landlocked piece of property. I'm also going to refer you back now to page 315 of your packet. We have modified the conditions of approval. There are actually five conditions, and I'm just going to read them briefly, quickly for the record. Page 315, I'm reading from the resolution that's in your packet. The existing portion of the sanitary sewer to Manhole 1555 shall be considered abandoned, and no future connections to this portion of the sanitary sewer shall be made. Two, an easement of 30 feet by 60 feet will be needed for the Titusville, city of Titusville, maintenance of stormwater structures. The easement shall be 30 feet from curb going west and 60 feet going north, south, centered on the curb ramp. Condition three, a unity of title is needed for the two parcels that I just mentioned. Four, that cross-axis and maintenance easements are provided over all existing city-owned utilities, Florida Power and Light, AT&amp;T, Spectrum, Florida, city gas facilities in the area to be vacated. And then finally, on the next page, in the event that the compliance with the conditions set forth here and is not achieved within 180 days of the date of approval of the vacation, this resolution should become null and void. So it doesn't, it creates a situation where we don't have an open-ended resolution, that they'll have to have a certain amount of time to provide these easements to us. All of the agencies provided no objection or request, no objection with a request that there be an easement. So with that, I'll try to answer the questions you have about this, and the applicant is also here.
Counsel, any questions?
Just...
Go ahead, Member Nelson.
Just one. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval with a condition. Do you... Is there a reason to have that condition? Do you understand?
Are you referring to the trail condition?
No, they had a condition clarifying the point of the beginning of the easement running west, and I wasn't sure what that was.
We clarified this with our surveyor, and he believes that the survey that was provided to us is correct. We could certainly verify again before this is recorded.
Okay.
Any other questions? Call the cards, please.
Woody Rice?
All right, I think we're there with you.
Good evening, all. Woody Rice, 505 Indian River Avenue, Titusville, Florida. This right-of-way that's in front of you tonight is sort of unique in the fact that my client owns both sides of that right-of-way, okay? So when it's vacated, typically when you vacate something, you go from the center line and half goes to this property owner and half goes to that. He owns both. And what was, why it was important really was because he was into development in all those lots together and combine them and do a good project downtown. The other thing that's unique about this right-of-way, it is just a paper right-of-way. I mean, if you look at the photos I gave you, and on page 333 of your agenda item is the aerial, if you're looking from the middle of Lemon Street and looking back, you see the directional arrow telling you to turn left or right there, and nothing but trees and grass. And you look at number two there, if you look at, and it's where at the back of that right-of-way, looking toward the railroad track, well, what's on the other side of the railroad track? The Rinker facility, privately owned property. So even if you want to do a crossing there, you have to use power of eminent domain on Rinker, or what used to be Rinker, to take that property. Third is usually you don't get a railroad crossing very easily because, you know, they want to eliminate those primarily from safety standpoint, because that's where a lot of the accidents occur between trains, pedestrians, or vehicles. So you tried to eliminate that. The easement that's in question, okay, if you look on photo number three on the front page, that's the one to the north, so you can sort of see it. And then the one that's, or to the south, the one to the north, you look, it's there, it's in the picture. It's just sort of overgrown. Now, that's where these, we really have no problem with providing the city the proper easement over their utilities at all. On page two, if you look, I'm standing... On page two, if you look, I'm standing at the railroad track, looking back toward Broad Street, and my little arrow points to where I, where it appeared to me that that's where the center of Broad Street was, which is the center of the right-of-way. And there again, it's all pretty overgrown, it's never been anything but a paper right-of-way, it's never been used by the public for any reason. And then the last picture on page two, number six, is looking east from sort of the front of the right-of-way that we're looking at, about behind that directional arrow sign there, and you can sort of see there again, it's just, it's grass, grass filled. So we, and we agree with all, all the conditions that staff put in, in the staff report. We think it's, it's, it's good for downtown. The, the one P&amp;Z member that wanted to use it for parking, you know, there's a reason why the bicycle path goes the path it goes, and it's really because of traffic signals. Because DOT, with, with some of the safety features there, they wanted the bicycle path to cross US one where there's a traffic signal. So cars would stop, everything would stop, and bicycles or pedestrians could cross there. So it goes down Main Street, it doesn't come down Broad Street. Two, if, if you were to use, I mean, it's been vacant forever, it's never been used for anything publicly, okay? You have the Julius Street parking lot over there across from the theater for parking, you could restripe portions of Broad Street and have additional parking there if you wanted to. But I think there's, there's a delicate balance in our downtown. I'm not saying that bicycle paths are not important, because I think they are in our community, but I think also revitalization of our downtown and doing a new commercial development, making it work, especially in an area that there's really been nothing in this whole area between Lemon and Pine Street that has really come about and been developed. So I'm just asking you to use some good judgment tonight. I would appreciate your support, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I'm just calling you City Manager again. Vice Mayor.
Yes, just, just one question, if I have no problem, but who becomes the owner of this, if we vacate this, then who becomes the owner of this property?
It would be my client.
Your client become?
Half goes to this owner on this side, half goes to him on both sides of the land adjacent to that right-of-way, so that's where it ends up.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from counsel?
I.
Thank you.
I see none, and I should have called you the applicant rather than the card. All right, nothing else from counsel, so City Clerk?
John Rogers.
John Rogers, thirty-four, one nine Mogul Avenue. I'm an alternate on the P&amp;Z Commission, I was president at the last meeting, although I did not vote that evening, as an alternate was not needed. However, I am in complete agreement with the newest member, Megan Moscoso, that the city may be getting ready to make a huge mistake by handing this Broad Street right-of-way over to a developer. I need to stress here that I am not here as a representative of the P&amp;Z, I'm simply here as a private Titusville citizen and resident, but I am here as a Titusville resident citizen who is an avid cyclist, and I think you need to hold on to the Broad Street right-of-way so that you can properly finish the bike, the bike trail. If you do a Google Maps search for Boggs Gases, six twenty Main Street, Titusville, you will see a green line coming in from Garden Street, flyover on Garden Street. Before that, it comes in straight as an arrow from Memes, from Scotts Moore, from Maytown, where it splits and goes to Edgewater and New Smyrna, and in the other direction to Sanford, Orlando, and eventually Tampa. It is a major, major recreational amenity that I think will bring increasing attention and business to Titusville in years to come. And yet, behind Boggs Gases, on the end of Cannaveral Avenue, it does a little hook and dies into a cracked sidewalk on a potholed street after going around the concrete road barrier next to a tumble-down home whose yard is full of junk and decaying food, bowls for stray cats. It is an embarrassment. Ms. Moscoso and others on the P&amp;Z Board agreed that it is an embarrassment to the city. Furthermore, Ms. Moscoso said that she did not feel safe on this street and in this section of the trail, and I agree that even as a man, the area is a little uncomfortable at times. I think that the right-of-way should be used to continue the trail. I think we will need a flyover at the railroad, at the railroad bridge, which will have to be funded, of course, some other way, which is how the one at Garden Street was funded. The requirement for lights on US one, I get that, but we don't need traffic lights on US one, all we need is the flashing lights that are operated by a button, just like we have right down here, doesn't stop traffic when no one's using it, not a problem. And, you know, you need a twenty-foot trail width, you can probably get it either from Rinker or from the other property, yes, you could use eminent domain, I suggested it myself. I think the other thing that needs to be considered is this client refuses to state what it is that will go there once you enable the project to proceed. And as you recall, Titusville has recently said that once a project kind of goes forward, if someone says that it has a certain number of affordable housing units, then you can't say no, even if it's ten floors or twelve floors or thirteen floors, because those are close enough, those buildings along the water are close enough. So I think you need to consider what you might be opening the door to before you say yes.
Any questions? I see, I do, I do see one, Member Stokel.
It might be for staff. I am curious about it, because this is the second time we've heard something with the bike trail. Do we have any updates on the bike trail, or the plans to finish it, or what that looks like?
So the area behind Boggs, why it was diverted on to Cannaveral, is they will not give that land up, the railroad will not give that land up. And for the reasons that Mr. Rice said, they don't want an additional crossing, they don't want pedestrians crossing there, they want pedestrians crossing on Main Street.
So does that mean there's no plans as of right now to complete that?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's.
And right now, the bicycle trail is on the other side of AMAX, it's completed past the Parish Park, and it now is trying to make its way to the beach.
Okay, because I know that we've been talking about it going out to the beach. Okay, my other question, how are both pieces of that property currently zoned right now, Brad?
Well, the downtown mixed-use zoning district, so in this right-of-way, when it's vacated, the center line of the two zoning districts on both, the north and south, will come to the center line of this right-of-way that's vacated. But, so technically, it does have a downtown mixed-use zoning on it.
Okay, so both pieces have that. Do you, by those two pieces potentially being combined into a bigger area, does that now expand what they could potentially do with that piece of property now that it's doubled in size, in essence?
Possibly, but the easements will have restrictions on how that area can be utilized, so depending on what those easements say. So for example, if it allows for a parking lot or some kind of landscaping improvements, or whatever that might be, those easements will allow us to be able to access those utilities with some, you know, on our own without having to reconstruct what is there. So it would not be to the advantage of the applicant to put a building on top of what's there.
Okay, so they still have to meet certain requirements with the easement, you feel pretty confident that the city will still have access to what it needs to? The property will increase in size, that would probably give the client more flexibility in what they want to do with their land, potentially a bigger project, but it's still, there's no application for a changing of land use or rezoning at this time?
No.
Okay, okay.
And you have nothing for the speaker?
Did you have any other comments based on the questions I just asked?
Somewhat, yes. Number one was that the issue of parking was raised, and to me, the best parking for access to the bike trail is the Wells Fargo parking lot and the Space View parking area, and again, those are right at the end of Broad Street. That was Ms. Moscoso's concern. But second, again, I just reiterate that eminent domain could be used to take a twenty-foot section that would go over the railroad track, and you don't have a railroad crossing if you have a railroad flyover, so.
Yeah, it is a little disappointing to hear, because I know we've, we're here when a lot of the bike trails were being started, to know that.
They did a lot of voting to keep it.
Right, that there's no plan as of right now to make that connection.
It's a marvelous asset to the city.
Yes, and I appreciate you pointing that out. Thank you. Any other cards?
The last card is Stan Johnston.
Stan, you want me to stop them till you're done?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
No, I said, they're leaving, I said, you want me to stop them till you're done?
No, 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 that's okay, that's all right. This is quasi judicial, and I've lived around here for many years, in fact, it's, it was there last year or the year before that, I went seventy-seven miles on that bikeway for one day, and so I've been on, and I wrote on it a number of times. But I'm not against it, I think that what was said about Wells Fargo and so forth, that's more likely a place. This area is historically a depressed area, I mean, really depressed. In fact, there was a house there, it was a nice, I always considered a nice wood house, frame house, it's torn down. There's another one not very far from that, also along the railroad tracks on that side, nice house, as far as I was concerned, it was an old house, two-story, torn down too. So I think what Mr. Rice said, I like what he said about revitalization of downtown, and I believe that's what, that's what it will be. But, but even in spite of all this, I think that what the city should do is adjourn this meeting because of the problems that are going on with the city that are not being addressed, and I've sent you emails about that. So that's what I would like you to do, but I'm, I'm not against this project, I think Mr. Rice has represented it pretty well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other cards?
Yes, sir.
Counsel? I am, Member Nelson.
I can make a motion, I do want to make.
Hold on one second, because it's quasi judicial, I will go back to the applicant. So if you want to come up and clarify anything you just heard, that would probably be helpful, and then we will move forward.
I think, I think the real key here is economic development and revitalization of our downtown, I think that that is the key, and, and I think the bicycle trails are just one aspect of that, but this, this whole area is, is pretty blighted, and there's not much going on, and no activity going on there, and this, this is going to give us an opportunity to start, at least to have the first thing going in, that people will say, hey, this is important to our downtown, let's keep building on this, on this momentum that we have here. So I think that's important. You know, it's been a paper right-of-way forever, if the public really just wanted to use it, they could have for the last fifty years. I went back thirty years in aerials to look, to see if there ever was anything, and it was nothing but grass and trees for the last fifty years. And growing up in this town, that's the only thing I can remember being there. So I just, there again, ask you for your, your support, and let's, let's, let's do something great for our downtown. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor.
Yes, how, when, if the come, the combining of the properties happened, how large would that make that lot?
Well, the, the, in your packet, and I don't have the numbers, I'm not with you right now, but the right-of-way is a hundred feet, and I forget what the depth is on there. So that additional land with the other three, three parcels, because there's three parcels we're talking about, the two that are landlocked behind each other, okay, my client owns, and that's the one that we have to do the unity of title, because you, you can't have landlocked land in the state, and then the other one is across the street from that. So it will make a, a good size to do a commercial development is what the intent is here. They're in negotiations right now with, with what they want to do, they're, I just asked, I was, had the liberty to discuss and disclose what that is, and they said, no, until the negotiation's over, they don't want to disclose that yet, so. I just don't have the size. I can add them up real quick if you give me a few minutes.
Right, it is, you know, it's, it's a wonderful, wonderful thing, it's just, you, as you stated, the land has been sitting idiosyncratic until you figure out something you can do with it, that's kind of where we are.
Okay, Member Nelson.
Well, and I just wanted to say, to Mr. Rogers' point, we have an old train station downtown, and it's been there, I think, it's been there all my life, and they have spent dozens and dozens of years trying to get the railroad to give that, that station up, and nothing, nothing has moved them in probably fifty years, so.
Say again?
Yes, the speaker will respond.
No, let's hold on that, I don't want to get into this back and forth, I think that I certainly understand your view and the bicycle path and the revitalization, and I think that I understand Mr. Rice's thought about revitalizing as well. So with that, Member Nelson, do you want to make a motion?
Move to approve the vacation of the right-of-way number one, twenty twenty-three, Broad Street.
Second.
Is that with the conditions as stated by staff, the five?
With the conditions as stated by staff, and verifying the survey first.
I have a motion from Member Nelson, a second by Member Cole, roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Passage unanimously, I will say, I think that your concerns are a concern we have all the time, you know, growth versus, hey, this other part, bicycle paths included, but I do think that the revitalization is a word that that area is needed for a long time, yeah, and I appreciate that. City Manager.
On to item nine C, which is conditional use permit two dash twenty twenty-three. The location is three five eight zero Garden Street, All American Oil. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to reestablish a retail fuel sales use in new facilities, including stores, pumps, et cetera, at thirty-five eighty Garden Street. A CUP is required for storage and use of regulated substance, gasoline, in the area of critical concern. The subject property is located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Garden Street and I ninety-five, and is within the area of critical concern. Subject property contains two, two point zero four acres, and is currently developed as a convenience store with gas pumps, and it's currently vacant. Future land use designation on the property is commercial high intensity and it's owned regional commercial. On the two August twenty twenty-three Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, they recommended approval, the CUP, as presented by staff, its recommendations, conditions, and that one buffer be vegetation in back of the existing, in back, and the existing billboard on the property be removed. The vote was six one, with one member voting no because he feels that this will eventually cause problems in the future with traffic. Mr. Parrish is here to update you on this project and answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Parrish.
I'm just going to refer you to a few, a couple of exhibits inside your packet. On page three sixty-four, your packet, refer you to an aerial, and you can see that this property is located in the northwest corner of the interchange of Garden and I ninety-five. There was an existing gas station there, was unused for several years, and so has to be reestablished, and because of the CUP requirement, that's why it's brought before you. So this is being considered as a new use basically on this property, even though you had a previous similar use several years before on this property. Again, as the city manager's already indicated, the property is also in the area of critical concern, so there are environmental restrictions on this property as it's going to be developed. The property, I'm going to refer you now to page three fifty-eight of your packet, and that's the concept plan that was submitted with this conditional use permit. That is a requirement of a CUP, that a concept plan be submitted to help demonstrate compliance with the code. They will provide the landscape buffers as required by the code, which include the ten-foot deep landscape buffer to the rear, as the P&amp;Z has asked for. The minimum planting requirements for overstory trees are twelve feet high, in addition to understory trees and other vegetation. On the other, north side of this property is the Brookshire subdivision, and they have their own landscape requirements as well. As you can see, the property will be redeveloped with a new gas station there, new stormwater retention facility, and will have to meet the area of critical concern requirements. On page three fifty of your packet, we found that this application is consistent with the city's code for conditional use permit for a for a, and conditional use criteria, zoning criteria, and the use criteria, and criteria that you find in the hazardous materials technical manual that we have, related to hazardous materials. And, you know, it's only one condition that we're suggesting here, and that they get a wellfield protection operating permit. And that would have to be issued prior to a certificate of occupancy for the building. With that, I'll try to answer any questions you have, and the applicant is also here to answer the questions.
Member Cole.
I do have a question, and that is the existing tanks, I'm assuming there are existing tanks there. Those tanks have to be removed, right?
I understand that they're going to have to put in new tanks there.
Okay, so they're going to take up the existing tanks?
I believe so.
Why don't we-
The applicant can probably answer that question.
Why don't we move to the applicant on that? Matter of fact, come on up, applicant, we'll have you stay there if we need to ask, or add something, we'll do the same.
You heard my question, right?
Name an address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here in front of you tonight presenting this project. My name is Bruce Moya, the President of MVP Engineering in Melbourne, Florida. So what we're, this is the plan. I think this is an opportunity, in my opinion. We're at a major intersection. You've got the interstate, and you've got a major arterial, and you're right on the corner, highly visible. It's been a vacant gas station for a long time, and it looks pretty bad. So what we want to do is completely rebuild it, tear it down completely, and put in all new facilities, new tanks, new piping, new building, new pumps, and come up to complete current standards with your city code. We are in the area of critical concern, which is why we're here. We have to have a conditional use in order to build here, to do anything, even to redevelop here. But we are outside your 750-foot setback, so the conditions are less than what they would be if we were inside that. We're far, we're pretty far away from that wellhead, so we're hoping that won't be an issue at all. All the latest technology, you know, the dual-line pipes, the tanks, you know, everything's going to be put into today's standards, meeting all state standards and city standards. We presented the staff, and I'm sure they forwarded to you the report, for how we would handle any kind of hazardous situation. That's all outlined in the report. So we were prepared for that, and we would implement that in the remote chance that anything would ever have to happen. It's documented, so you know exactly what we're going to do. It's, there was some discussion, you know, at the P&amp;Z about traffic, and, you know, about maybe where it's located. And I did look up the subdivision, and unusually, they didn't put their houses right against our property, which is good for them. So our property is over 150 feet away from any home to the west, and over 500 feet from any home to the north. So their homes closer to 95 than there are to our site. So I think that they won't even know that we're even there. You know, traffic has historically been there. I don't think it's going to be any higher than it probably was when it was in operation, but you'll have a nice new store. So maybe because it's going to be nice and it's going to be new, you know, you might get a little more traffic because it's going to be nice. I mean, who doesn't like a newer gas station compared to one that's, you know, rundown? So we think it's going to be an asset to the city, definitely remove the plate that's there. We have no objection to any of the staff's comments or the conditions. And so really, we're hoping that we can get your approval. And like I say, it is just a conditional use to allow us to have the, a gas station in this critical area. So I'm really just here to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, the conditions that P&amp;Z are recommending, that's not something the staff has recommended. We don't believe they're necessary.
Thank you. Good, thank you for that clarification. Member Cole, are you good?
You didn't answer my question. I asked-
We will be replacing, we will be taking out-
Replacing and removing.
Removing all the existing tanks and replacing the tanks, piping, everything.
Member Nelson.
Okay. Bruce, I have a different question.
Okay.
Our little homeowners association, 210 units, we did a survey, and in two years, we should have close to 100 EVs in our condos with no place to charge. Have you guys thought about that? Because they're close to, I mean, if they go down Garden Street to get on 95 to go anyplace, that's an opportunity.
For charging stations?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we actually have a representative from the-
I mean, obviously, that's not part of it, but I'm looking at it, and I'm like, all these people are going rare.
Yeah, my name is Jigga Patel. I'm representing the American Oil.
Hi.
Yes, we are thinking about putting the charges, so we are going to have it ready.
Okay.
The piping's going to be ready, but it depends on the cost and all that. We will install it in future, yes.
Okay.
So we're going to have connections for electricity ready, not electricity, but at least the piping ready, so we could move forward faster.
I just, I'm sitting here with all these people going, yes, we're getting EVs, where do we charge? And I'm like-
Yeah, we are doing the same thing in Cocoa also. So we're doing the same thing in the Cocoa too, so.
Okay, great.
Actually, real quick. Fill out a card.
Say again?
Could you fill out a card?
I want to make sure he gets this one, because I'm just curious. When you set up an EV station like that next to a gas station, et cetera, I'm assuming there's a cost of some sort for the electricity?
I'm assuming there is.
He would assume that, but-
There's a cost.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think F&amp;L picks up the tab for that. That goes through their meter, so I'm sure they pay for it.
Okay.
Hopefully, they'll get enough, if they come and they'll buy something in the convenience store, absorb that cost.
I mean, that's something people do, is they pull up, they plug in, and then they go into the store, get whatever.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, because you have to kind of kill a little bit of time, right?
Yeah.
So if you're going to plug in, you got to do something.
So, yeah, big fight at the HOA meetings.
Yep. I was going to say that we run on diesel around here, but that'd be too corny. That was all in jest, no. I'll be very honest with you, I'm copying the guy. I mean, this is all candid. I just heard the other day that the new mayor, 19-years-old in Edgewater, his first name is Diesel, and I heard that he, city manager actually told me, that he started a meeting, and he gave his little talk, and he said, our city will be running diesel, and I'm like wah, wah, wah. So I thought I'd take a shot. This was a perfect time. It's not many people here. But anyway, any other questions? The mayor, vice mayor.
Yes, I understand, know everything about what you're requesting. Is the site of the building, the site, the actual site of the construction, is it going to be much larger than the present area of the current building that is there?
Yeah, it's going to be a little bit, little bit bigger. If you, there was a plan that we, a site plan that we did submit, and if you compare it to the survey, you can see that it will be significantly bigger than what's there now, for several reasons.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, one, we have to meet access standards, so we have to make sure if a truck gets in, it can get out, so we have to make sure that we can get them out. So we have to have the parking lots can be made, so vehicles, whether it be emergency vehicles, semi vehicles-
So this is going to be a truck stop as well?
It'll be a bigger, bigger store, so, yeah, it will be a little bit bigger.
Yeah, yeah, a big truck stop. All right, thank you.
Okay, I see no more council people, so we will go to the cards.
Can I ask Mr. Moya to fill out a card as well?
Sure.
Thank you. Stan Johnston is the next.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. There was an opposition to this by Mr. Facen because of traffic issues. And it appears to me that since the other gas stations are on the other side of, both of them are on the other side, the east side of I-95, and they're further away, that by having another service station located closer to I-95, and on the other side, is that, is that it appears to me, is you're going to reduce traffic for somebody, it appears to me. That's what it looks like to me, to reduce traffic. And I had a special concern about this as being a CUP that's being, can be considered, because it was accepted at one time. And I expressed some disappointment when legal staff said that the CUP expired in six months after not being used. I said I was disappointed that the legal staff at the P&amp;Z meeting said that the CUP expired in six months. I was very disappointed that the legal staff, I think you listen to this, said the CUP expired in six months. Now, I'm thinking about, what if I had a CUP to build a house? And I had it vacant for six months, did I lose my CUP?
Good question.
I don't know what the heck's going on, but I just, I just, I just feel like this CUP should never even been considered at all. Should have never been, should have never been brought forward. I don't think it should have been done. I think you should have just, because the site plan is going to take care of the area of critical concern requirements and so forth that were asked at the P&amp;Z meeting, that they shouldn't have asked anyways. So I think that it should, think about what's fair here, all right? And I don't think it increases traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other cards?
Yes, sir.
Applicant, anything else you want to add to that? Counsel? Staff? Motion?
Move to approve Conditional Use Permit number 2-2023, finding it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and satisfies their approval criteria in 34-76 of the LDRs with the conditions set out by staff.
Those motions aren't getting any easier, are they?
No, you're making them harder.
That's why Herman's going to second.
Second.
I have a, the motion by Member Nelson, the second by Member Cole. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson? Mayor Diesel?
Yes. Passage unanimously. Thank you so much for answering the questions and taking interest in our city. City Manager.
We're on to ordinance's first reading, item 10A, which is Comprehensive Plan Small-Scale Amendment, SSA number 4-2023. Location of property is 3020 Whipple Street, and it involves two ordinances. It's ordinance number 33-2023 and 34-2023. The city attorney will read the ordinances for the record.
Ordinance number 33-2023. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60-1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville by amending the future land use map by changing the land use designation on approximately 1.26 plus or minus acres of property located west of Whipple Street, having Brevard County parcel ID number 21352900545 from the conservation future land use designation to the residential 2 future land use designation, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 34-2023. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number 5, 1993, at the City of Titusville by amending the zoning map, made a partisan ordinance by reference by changing the open space and recreation OR zoning district to the rural residential RR zoning district on approximately 1.26 plus minus acres of property located west of Whipple Street, having Brevard County parcel ID number 21352900545, providing for an effective date. And as a reminder, this is your first reading.
Okay, I guess we'll go with any questions or comments from council? Staff, anything to add?
Well, if you have any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Call the card.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. You know, I've had, I mentioned a number of comments about the comprehensive plan, and I do not like what the comprehensive plan is doing, because it's got so many errors in it, and the city is not correcting them. So when we have an issue about the comprehensive plan, there are so many problems and so many errors. I would, I would say, just what I've said before, is that it's to my, it's to my observation, is that what you guys are doing, you're doing about everything you can do to possibly hide city's dirty laundry in regards to the comprehensive plan. And that includes Mr. Parrish and Mr. Galindo, who falsely reported on the resilient Titusville project, which I complained to Mr. De Naro, and he just dismissed everything through our city manager. That's a serious issue, a serious issue. In other words, it's just withholding of the truth. And so I've written to you about that the truth is not being done on our comprehensive plan, big time, big time. Thank you.
Thank you. This, any of you have the cards?
Yes.
All right, this is the first reading. No vote, no action. City Manager.
We're on to item 10B, which is Comprehensive Plan Small-Scale Amendment, SSA number 3-2023, for 1925 South Park Avenue. This involves ordinances number 35-2023 and ordinance number 36-2023. The city attorney will read the ordinances for the record.
Ordinance number 35-2023. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60-1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville by amending the future land use map by changing the land use designations on approximately 10.09 plus minus acres of property located at the northeast quadrant at the intersection of South Park Avenue and Harrison Street, having Brevard County parcel ID numbers 22350900503 and 22350900509 from the commercial low-intensity and medium-density residential future land use designations to the high-density residential future land use designation, providing severability and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 36-2023. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number 5, 1993, at the City of Titusville by amending the zoning map, made a partisan ordinance by reference by changing the neighborhood commercial NC and multifamily medium-density R2 zoning districts to the multifamily high-density R3 zoning district on approximately 10.09 plus minus acres of property located at the northeast quadrant at the intersection of South Park Avenue and Harrison Street, having Brevard County parcel ID numbers 22350900503 and 22350900509 by repealing ordinance numbers 74-2005 and 76-2005 in all conditions, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Okay, anything from council? I see nothing. Staff, want to add anything to that?
I do want to mention to you that we did lay on your dais some handouts. We omitted, in your agenda, you have, the city attorney just read the correct titles from the correct ordinances, the substance and intent language inside, and whereas is in the section body of this ordinance are the same, it's just the title had to be changed a little bit, because we did have to re-advertise this. So this application is going to be heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission on August 16th. It was initially supposed to go to them on August 2nd, but because of an advertisement issue, we had to re-advertise the hearing and then reschedule that meeting for August 16th. And so this first reading before you, the ordinances on your packet are incorrect, but the ordinances that were read to you and on your dais are correct. In addition to that, the concept plan, we did include a, one of the pages of the concept plan that was submitted, the applicant voluntarily submitted with this land use resounding application in your packet. However, we laid on your dais the full packet that the applicant provided to us as far as the concept plan. So if you have any questions about it, the concept plan really is on page two of the handout that is on your dais. With that, I'm trying to answer the questions you have.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, if my, my serves me, or my remembrance serves me well, that's a lot of field that's in there, is it not? They had to bring a lot of field dirt to fill all of that in over there, over the last. Does that have anything to do with the amendment that, and change in the comprehensive plan? Because I remember correctly, for some reason, all that was underwater, all water at one particular point? No?
I'm not aware of that. I know this property has been through several rez- I know this property has been through several rezonings, and even there was a proposed project on this property, and has been cleared, so you do see, you know, there's some grass that was, hadn't been planted after, when the construction was started at some point, but our understanding. So, we're not aware that this property was underwater. I know that a portion of it is, includes a lake to the east of this property that provides drainage to the development to the north as well. The applicant could probably give you a better history about this property and whether any fill was actually brought on this property or not, potentially.
Yeah. You're on. Foo me.
Can I add to that?
Um, Member Stokel?
Yeah, I was thinking, because I had thought about this area as well, and I think that land north of there, in north and east, I guess, used to be a golf course, and some land was filled in there. And I think to Member Robinson's point, I know in the past, we've heard complaints about that lake being, being overflowing, and a lot during, anytime there's storms, the ground is that, that is in that neighborhood just to the north of it, is wet. And we've had people come before us at council. So, I think that is probably what he's referencing there is, it tends to, the land over there and that area tends to be wet already. And then, it, no, I can't speak for you, but I do have concerns with the development over there. I already know it is zoned medium density, and it does make me a little concerned to hear going from medium to high density.
Well said. Vice Mayor, you back?
No, no, I, just because, you know, I know that I've, a couple of years has passed, but I know that there used to be a lot of water standing out there. Whether it was something, but it was, I used to pass it almost every day, there was a lot of water.
It's a little bit of a lowland. It's a little bit of a lowland. I can see where anytime it would rain, that could become an issue. But I, I don't know the rest. Uh, anybody else? Member Cole, you ready? Clerk, call cards, please.
Woody Rice?
Woody Rice, five oh five Indian River Avenue. I wasn't going to speak, but I would like to answer your questions. I put my card in. No, it, just because it slants and goes toward the way, it doesn't mean you necessarily have to add a lot of fill. We're going to terrace the thing. And I'm actually putting rain gardens spread out to try to, to add additional treatment beyond that lake as a stormwater pond. That not only was designed for this property, it was also designed for one of the sections of Titus Village also.
Right.
Okay, back, back there. So, it was permitted through St. John's, and there's an impervious area that I'm allowed for this project in that lake. But I would like to take it to the next level and do the rain gardens and do that. So, we're going to terrace the thing, is what we're going to do. I hope that answers your question.
Very good.
Okay.
Nice to hear. I'm glad you noted that. Does anyone else have any other questions? Okay. I see none. Next card?
Last card is Stan Johnston.
First of all, is this quasi judicial?
No.
Okay.
This is first reading.
But on the second reading, it'll be quasi judicial?
It's two items. The land use is legislative, the rezoning is quasi judicial.
But not tonight?
Not tonight.
No, it's just the first reading.
But the next time, it'll be quasi judicial?
The rezoning will be. The land use will be legislative.
That's interesting. In other words, I can, maybe I could make up all kinds of stories right now, and I can't be perjuring, perjury. That's right. That's right. But legally, but, so, so I'm concerned about how the quasi judicial is going on here. But this is another issue about comprehensive plan, and I've been very much against the, the city and, and the comprehensive plan because you don't update it. Uh, in this particular area, you have a pond and so forth, that has a AE flood zone, it's a numbered flood zone, there's no calculations, never went through FEMA, it should have went through FEMA, it never did. So, it never went properly through FEMA. And so, you have something which, which I regret to say is, is something that the City of Titusville blundered, gone, blundered again, and did the wrong thing. Uh, and the city does that many times, and that's another reason why. But anyhow, and it, it says here, high density residential. I wish the city would, would start containing this high density stuff. Because we'd look, if you, if you want to look at something, what happened is that, is that in SNJ Oaks, they, they put this thing, this, they've got all kinds of waivers and variances and so forth like that. And then what they do? They took out all the treats. And it's going to be a project which is, I don't think it's going to be good. So, I'm, I'm against the high, more high density in the city, and the city has been pushing it, and I think it's the wrong thing to do. So, I don't, I don't, I don't want to go for more high density. We keep doing it, doing a high rise and more density, high rise, more density, more density, more density. And you even have, what do you call it? The city has even forced higher density. In other words, had administrative rezonings to high density. Whereas, a few years ago, it was the opposite. We took away units from, from the density. So, it's what's going on right now is the opposite of what was going on back in the time of Truman Scarborough. Thank you.
Thank you. Any of the cards?
Yes, sir.
All right. That's a first reading. No vote, no action. City manager.
We're on to new business, which is item twelve A. This is the draft comprehensive plan amendment to future land use, transportation, and housing elements of the draft land development regulations. The city's consultant, Kimberly Horn, will present the draft goals, objectives, policies, and future land use, transportation, and housing elements of the comprehensive plan. Consultant will also present a draft land development regulations to help implement the goals, objectives, and policies. The environment related to the comprehensive plan amendments will also be addressed as part of this project. Staff recommends that the council review the draft comprehensive plan amendments and schedule transmittal hearings for review by the State Land Planning Agency. And Eliza, how are you?
Before Eliza begins, I just want to give a brief introduction about this. What we're asking for you is actual direction this evening. Eliza's going to briefly go through the comprehensive plan policies that you initially saw back in, in May, and you have in your agenda, and then also, the first time you're seeing this evening are code changes. Last year, you specifically asked for that. You wanted to see these policies, and then the draft code changes to see how these policies would be implemented. Kind of see that as one package. What we're asking you for tonight, though, is for direction. If you agree with these policies, to go ahead and schedule the transmittal hearings. All that means is that they'll be brought before you as an advertised public hearing, so that if you approve at that hearing, for these to be sent to the state for their review. During that time, we can continue working on the code. And the, that was the second part that you see here, you'll see here in your packet. And then those, that comprehensive plan amendment will come back from the state with any objections or any concerns or comments they may have, and we'll address them. And then that would be brought back before you through public hearings again for adoption. So, transmittal does not mean agreeing to these policies at this point. Really, what we're asking for you is just to schedule the hearings. So, that, I'll transfer, I'll hand it over to Eliza to give you her presentation on these policies and the draft code changes.
Good evening.
Thank you for being here, again.
Thank you for having me.
Again. Go ahead.
Um, so, I'm here tonight to talk to you about the final two pieces of the puzzle of this effort that we've been working on for most of this year. Those two pieces are the, for the three areas that we're looking at, the downtown, the neighborhood to the west of downtown, and the gateway corridors, specific land development code policies that implement, land development code standards that implement the policies that we discussed during the last work session. In addition, we've integrated citywide policies based on the visioning and comprehensive planning efforts we did in the previous round circa twenty eighteen throughout the existing comprehensive plan. And those are kind of more limited updates. So, all of that is in your packet. I'm going to do my best to, to briefly overview it, but I'm happy to answer questions about anything that, that I discuss, as well as what's in your packet. As Brad mentioned, there's no action being requested tonight, but we do have fairly detailed recommendations in the packet that you're, you're able to review. So, as part of that piece of looking at the citywide policies, so previously, the package that you saw in May was just policies that were focused on those three focus areas. Whereas, the, the final task in the, this, our scope was to integrate policies that we'd already discussed back in twenty eighteen for where they would fit into the existing comprehensive plan. So, the first piece is actually a new element that we're recommending. It's, it's not very long, but it's a citywide element because it's cross-disciplinary. It doesn't relate to a specific land use or transportation or, or housing, but it's broad-based. So, that citywide element we're proposing would have the goal of, for Titusville to be a thriving historic city with a vibrant economy, a welcoming small-town ambiance, and a healthy, active waterfront enjoyed by residents and visitors. That language probably sounds familiar because it's language that we've been using throughout this process. It would also have four objectives related to capitalizing on the dynamic regional economic forces of the Space Coast, bringing a high quality of life to residents, using place-based design and a focus on character, as well as creating opportunities for individuals and businesses. And all of those have supporting policies that you can find in your packet. As I mentioned, there's also some additional policies elsewhere in the plan, primarily in the future land use element and the transportation element. One of the bigger changes is a rewriting of the goal for growth management and land use to be a little bit more specific around, more, more precision around what would be appropriate for the city moving forward, including making wise use of existing infrastructure investments, compact connected neighborhoods, and facilitating access to services. Now, we've shown just some of the comprehensive plan objectives. There's some targeted updates within that, and you can see those in, strike through underline in your packet, primarily having to do with implementing approaches to urban design that would support the vision, supporting mixed use and infill and redevelopment, often in the same locations, and supporting neighborhood connectivity. So, that was a very quick overview of those comprehensive plan amendments, noting that, again, they're, they're very targeted, and you can view them in the packet in more detail. So, now I'm going to shift to the focus about the, the three focus areas and the land development code updates that would implement the policies that we've discussed in the past. And I'll, we've included some of the policies here, so we can just refresh on them, but I'm, I'm going to skip through those very quickly to get to the standards, which you haven't necessarily seen in as much detail. So, we talked about that the goals for downtown, creating a sense of place, allowing for businesses to grow and strive, sorry, grow and thrive. So, the objective we discussed earlier starts to make that policy, as opposed to just, just kind of a good idea, as well as objectives that would support that. One of the policies that we want to focus on is encouraging infill and redevelopment and that vibrant, active downtown. And the way that we see implementing that is establishing, within the land development code, a primary pedestrian network, which includes South Street, Garden Street, US One, Main Street, and Palm Avenue. And this list could be amended, but these are the, the streets we think are appropriate at this time to include in that primary pedestrian network. And that identification would come with standards on how the streetscape and the sidewalk would be updated if redevelopment happens adjacent to those properties. So, there's a, a very specific list of how, exactly how wide the sidewalks need to be, how, what kind of landscaping needs to be installed, and minimum and maximum setbacks that require buildings to be relatively close to the sidewalk while providing some flexibility. However, setback enough from the street provide an adequate width of the sidewalk and room for nice canopy trees that would provide shade. We also talked previously about the positive elements of having more people living downtown, and the mechanism for that in the comprehensive plan is creating a downtown density pool. So, that downtown density pool has to be implemented through the land development code standards, which provide more specificity on how it would be, how a particular application would be looked at. It would require each project to be looked at by city council because the package wouldn't be exactly the same. These are, for better or worse, these are likely to be fairly rare projects that are going to want to bring these larger numbers of people downtown. We think that there are real benefit, but it also is a back and forth between the city and the developer to try to make sure that it's beneficial to the city on multiple levels. So, the kinds of benefits that these projects would bring could include enhanced, enhanced public realm, affordable or workforce housing, publicly accessible parking, active ground floor uses, and improved parks and landscaping. Every project, a project would not have to necessarily provide all of those, but the density benefit could be scaled based on how many benefits they're providing, again, based on negotiation with, with the staff and city council. So, currently, there is the maximum of thirty, thirty units per acre in the downtown sub-district, but if you buy into the bonus, if you opt into the bonus pool by adding these additional benefits to your project, you would be able to exceed that based on approval by city And lastly, we talked about downtown being a great place for multimodal transportation because it's compact, because there's great connectivity. And in addition to the streetscaping to support that, which is implemented through the, the previous standards we talked about, we also took a look at the parking standards and tried to better align those with downtowns that we're looking at across the region. So, some of those standards changed, but not all. We also noted some, some differences between different types of uses that some made sense and some didn't make quite as much sense. So, we tried to align those a little bit better. We also looked at building siting standards for, for any new development that would come within this downtown sub-district, which includes, again, bringing those buildings close to the street, having them oriented with their doors close to the sidewalk, discouraging lots of curb cuts, which disrupt the pedestrian realm, and encouraging them to really put those, put those entrances, consolidate those entrances, or locate them outside of that primary pedestrian network. So, these new standards would be applicable to help shape that urban form and enhance pedestrian realm downtown. We also recommend removing minimum lot sizes to provide some flexibility. For larger projects, that's not really an issue, but you could see some creative smaller lot projects that would take advantage of the ability to do smaller lot sizes around the edge of downtown. And generally, we talked about trying to use, work with new development to make sure it enhances downtown in terms of physical attractiveness, and that includes those streetscaping and, and tree canopy standards that we discussed. And this is a visualization of what that would look like. Again, these policies are kind of cross-cutting, so the, the land development code standards address them in a holistic way. This one is not, this one is not one that we specifically are able to implement through the land development code, but we did prioritize that connection to, between downtown and the waterfront in a number of policies. And we mentioned this before, but this map that you see on the right showing the downtown sub-districts is in the land development code standards now, so that's not a change to the standards, but referencing it in the comprehensive plan is a, a change that links the standards to the policies. So, that's downtown. Moving on to our second district, we're looking at the urban mixed use. Urban mixed use is both an existing future land use district and an existing zoning district. It actually applies to several areas throughout the city, but we're focused specifically on the neighborhood immediately west of the downtown sub-district. You've previously, previously heard us refer to this as West Titusville, but we've told you that was a working title. We've now gotten feedback that the preferred community name for that is, is Cannaveral Heights, so we'll be using that moving forward. So, this is the objective you've seen before. We did amend the objective for urban mixed use overall, which you can see in your packet, and this was something we showed you back in May. But we specifically focused on this Cape, Cannaveral Heights neighborhood. So, we recommended consolidating the future land use and the zoning within the neighborhood, so it's more consistent. On the left, you see the current future land use and zoning, and on the right, you see the proposed, which consolidates all that central area into one district. There's still the downtown mixed use on the edges, which would remain downtown mixed use because that has more intense development, and we wouldn't want to downzone and down, reduce the future land use that's available on that. And it makes sense, it's a little bit different because it is on those larger corridors. And it makes sense it's a little bit different because it is on those larger corridors. So, we talked about the the desire to encourage neighborhood-serving mixed-use development within Cannaveral Heights. Part of the way we implement that is by adding additional permitted uses, including personal services, retail sales, but with a cap of 10,000 square feet, so you're not getting very large regionally-serving uses within the neighborhood. We added shoe repair. We weren't quite sure why that was excluded, but it seems like a totally reasonable thing to do in a neighborhood. We also recommend similarly, and probably even more relevant than the downtown sub-district, removing minimum lot sizes. This is an area where you really could see some creativity in what we call the missing-middle housing types, and I know you've had presentations on that before. And removing minimum lot sizes as a barrier could help with that. We also recommend, and we actually recommend this citywide, removing the residential unit size minimums. There's not a strong policy purpose for minimum unit sizes. They tend to just be a barrier to affordability, and they they limit who can live in a neighborhood by policy, and that's not necessarily a a policy choice that we would recommend. Another thing that's important, I mentioned this earlier, but the there are those sections of Cannaveral Heights that would be still part of the downtown mixed-use. And what that means practically is that they are governed by the gateway corridor standards, which we're going to talk about in a minute. So, there's some overlap between the the UMU area we're discussing, the Cannaveral Heights area, and the gateways corridors, which were which is going to be our third study area. So, again, here, we're looking at the kinds of site development standards that would encourage people to at least have the option to bike and walk within their neighborhood. As we mentioned, the comprehensive plan policies recommend recognize the unique relationship between Cannaveral Heights and downtown, that this is downtown's neighborhood, and downtown in some ways belongs to the neighborhood. So, we we're looking at how we can use that to the advantage to revitalize, to fill in vacant lots within the area. One of the things we look we're looking at is an a density and intensity and height bonus program. Now, this is much more limited than what we're proposing in downtown. Downtown, the the maximum would just be a negotiated discussion with applicant. In the urban mixed-use Cannaveral Heights area, it would be limited limited to thirty units an acre as a maximum. That could be negotiated at a lower number as well. The height bonus is just five feet, so not a not a huge increase on what's allowed now. And when you think about the densities within these areas, it's important to understand that they're very, very different densities than what you might be talking about on a greenfield site out on the edge of town, because these are existing lots. They don't have to create new roads. They don't have to create significant new infrastructure when they're building out. So, when you have a new development on the edge of town, they're typically a a large amount of that land is coming out for infrastructure, and they really can only build on a small part of it, whereas the lots in an existing neighborhood like this are fully buildable. So, the densities look a lot higher, even if the buildings are essentially the same size within the neighborhood. So, for instance, if you're talking about a fifty fifty-foot lot or a sixty-foot lot, thirty units an acre might be three or four units. So, not not talking about huge buildings. And we're also not seeing that there's going to be a huge opportunity to consolidate a lot of parcels in this area because it is fragmented ownership. So, we probably would see smaller projects coming up in most cases. Again, this is a negotiated process and would have similar would require negotiation of similar public benefits to what's required for the downtown density pool, with some adjustments to be appropriate to the smaller scale of the neighborhood, such as those ground-floor neighborhood-serving uses, agglomerating two or more lots for development to create that flexibility. So, we really see the opportunity here as being that missing-middle-type housing or very small mixed-use buildings as the most likely outcomes here. And we talk a lot about that neighborhood mobility piece, multimodal. So, similar to downtown, we're looking at having some streetscape requirements so that there are on select streets, a different set here, of course, although Main Street crosses crosses the barrier between Cannaveral Heights and downtown. Most of these streets are different and would require a little bit different streetscape in terms of the sidewalk style, but still requiring a reasonable amount of space for pedestrian movement, as well as the canopy trees. Setbacks would also be required on other streets, but they wouldn't necessarily have to build the wider sidewalk for just residential streets that wouldn't have the same amount of traffic. So, the last section here is gateway corridors. As we talked about, those gateways are that these are our major roads that lead into the city, and they create important first impressions, as well as providing significant redevelopment opportunities because that's where some of the larger parcels are located. So, we talked last time about the gateway corridors objective. This is a whole new objective within the future land use element because this is not something that was previously addressed, in contrast to DMU and UMU, which are changes to existing objectives. So, the 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 Land Development Code standards here support new development types that aren't currently allowed in the corridors. They may have previously been executed through something like a planned development, but this provides more specific standards for how they would move forward, as well as the opportunity for density and intensity. The gateway corridors are defined as US-1, Garden Street, South Street, and Cheney Highway, specifically outside of the downtown core. And it also would apply to specific future land use districts within those zones. So, we didn't want to be capturing existing low-density residential or or those kinds of future land use districts that wouldn't be appropriate for the this type of development. We talked previously about the aesthetic element, as well as the the options for mixed-use redevelopment that might happen along these corridors. And this is just one conceptual example. So, to operationalize that, what we're proposing is, again, a a maximum available density bonus of fifty units an acre. And this would be something that would be applied, again, through a negotiated process, but with a certain minimum set of standards that you have to meet for site design. So, they basically have two sets of standards, required standards that all developments going through this process have to meet, and enhancements that they have to essentially select from a menu and get approval from city council that they've provided a sufficient benefit. Some of the standards around site design would be required of any property that that not just seeks a bonus, but any rezoning or a variance from existing standards. So, these are the required elements of the program, managing the block perimeters to ensure that there's connectivity for people biking and walking, as well as driving, to avoid loading all of the traffic onto our major roads, wider sidewalks, planting zones, mixed abuses required on larger properties, moving the parking to the rear of buildings, and encouraging those active ground-floor uses in certain locations. The graphic on the left shows how that might front on one of our major roadways. And two, actually, the graphic on the right and the left show two different options for And the design enhancements are those that they that an applicant would have to opt into, but they would have to opt into at least two of these to even be eligible. So, we part of this this policy that we previously discussed was the acknowledgement that these corridors are the most likely location for increasing housing supply, and so that's part of the motivation here. So, that's all we have to present today. Again, happy to hand it back to Brad or take any questions.
Just to remind you, again, we're asking for a direction to schedule transmittal hearings only and to continue working on the code portions that that Eliza just presented to you.
I would just start off by saying that every time I see you, and even when we were in a in the round room for that presentation, your ownership and commitment to this process is obvious, and even as you're presenting, it's like I'm I'm sitting here thinking, gosh, how many hours did she put into this? I mean, seriously? And I just want to compliment you on that, however we go from there. So, Member Stokel.
Yep, thank you. A couple of questions. So, I this was primarily focusing on the comp plan changes. We are not to the code changes yet, correct?
So, we're asking for, again, just approval to schedule the comprehensive plan amendment, which includes the policies that Eliza described here and are in your packet to the comprehensive plan, and direction to allow us to continue working on the code sections that Eliza presented here.
There is a draft of the code sections in the packet, and I I tried to give a high-level overview without going into too much detail.
Yeah, okay. So, when we do the transmittal, does that mean that these comp plan changes would be final, or would we still have a chance to change these?
You'll have another chance. So, these are scheduled for hearings. What you could do, you can you can have these brought back to you with revisions before we schedule the actual hearings for transmittal to be sent to the state. Otherwise, you can allow us to schedule the hearings for transmittal, allow these to be sent to the state, and receive comments from the state, and then consider those comments. And if you want to make changes at that point prior to any adoption hearings, you can do that. But if they are significant changes, then they would have to go back to the state again.
Okay. And then I'm assuming all these color changes are each time we've done updates to like there's green, blue, purple. Is that each time that we go back and make changes? I was just curious about that.
Yeah, so we did provide, so the color colors are where changes were made from a prior draft.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So, the strike-through underline, the manual strike-through underline is the changes from the current code or the current comp plan.
Okay. And then I had three clarifying questions. One is in regards to the density pool. I feel like, which sounds good in theory, but if I recall from a previous meeting, it might have been one that we had more on our one-on-one, I I don't think that I feel like with the density pool, it sounds like, okay, we can make sure that everyone's sharing it, but the way that downtown is set up already, I mean, there's no way that anybody could ever hit the maximum anyway. So, I feel like it's just instead of saying density pool, it's just we're allowing whatever density is what it sounds like in all actuality.
So, there are there are other controls that are in place in terms of height, as well as FAR. So, there's a maximum FAR of five. There's a maximum height of typically five stories. There is some room for the the council to grant six stories within the the primary area that we're talking about. So, within those limitations, the council would have broad authority to to maximize that, but there's kind of practical limits to what you can get within that.
Okay. And then another one was, I know when you were talking again about the intensity and density, one of the things you said was you feel like most people would not put the highest intensity, which I think is great. I guess I I feel like you guys created a really great vision of what it could look like. My fear is with some of our changes, are we putting enough safeguards in place to make sure that somebody will come in and do some of these beautiful things versus trying to maximize and make the most amount of money they possibly can, and it doesn't necessarily look like that? Like, in all, I mean, that that is my biggest concern, and there's a lot here, and I just want to make sure, from the nuts and bolts, and as the mayor said, I know you guys spent a lot of time on this. My fear would be for us to go forward, and we're thinking that we're going to make some beautiful changes, which I think we all agree there's there is still some blight in the areas that you've addressed. So, we would like to see changes. I just want to make sure that we are setting ourselves up for those positive changes and not something in where we're like, oh, crap. Yes, that's my fear.
So, our our primary approach is around the form and location of the buildings, as well as the streetscape. So, that's really what we experience most of the time. We do have, you know, we weren't tasked with dealing with architectural standards, and so that is something that the city could consider between now and adoption, whether there's there's a need to to revisit additional architectural standards. But the eighty percent of the experience is the first floor of the building and the streetscape. So, that's where we really see the the biggest benefit. And we do see more people living downtown as a a positive for the city in and of itself, rather than a a problem.
Okay. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, one of the things that that is my concern is to expeditiously get this, some of the things in place and approved is what Member Stokel said, but get the coding in place, what what going to be the restrictions and what we're going to allow in the, what is it, Cannaveral Heights, so that as things progress forward, we know that there is is going to be a lot of development in the future. But we also have to stabilize our the areas that we have so that we can accommodate some people that are economically disadvantaged or going to be looking for some more reasonable housing. And the the other thing, if we can get the coding and the the standards of what we're going to use in those areas, I I love what what's going on. I love the vision, but we need to get it in place now because I know the state as a whole, all of this has to go to Tallahassee for oversight, approval, and so forth. I know that they're looking at the whole picture from a different angle, in some cases, than the local residents of this, you know, of our area. So, we want to send somebody, get it approved so that we will have something in place and stable as their vision grows or the population of the state of Florida grows, so that the coding, the standards, the policies that we put in place here in in Titusville will already be approved, and they will meet the needs of our community more so than the needs of of the state. So, as you're going forward, that's what that's why I think that that expeditiously, you should kind of get this going so that we can get it up to the state. And then I know that that's one of the things that you want, so that we can get get to the see what the state wants, or if they like what we're presenting, so that then everything will be in place, we can move forward, and so solidify a lot of things before someone solidifies it for us.
I think you're the state's taking a lot of preemptive laws and taking a lot of adopting a lot of things and taking a lot of powers from local rule. Yeah, you're correct. I think, though, that the comprehensive plan, it's all they're going to see. It's all they're required to see, and their purview is their review is going to be very limited. They're only going to be concerned about what impacts the state interest. So, if it has, if we're increasing densities, for example, like we did in a previous attempt, that's going to have a major impact on their 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 roadways, that they're going to have an objection. But other than that, I I really doubt they're going to have much comment back to us on this. But we do have to go through this process, and the code does not go to the state.
And one thing that we do see some other jurisdictions doing is, you know, they transmit to the state, and then when it comes back for adoption, they can approve the Land Development Code standards concurrently with the with the comprehensive plan adoption. So, I believe that would address some of the questions around the standards versus the policies.
Member Nelson.
So, I look at this Cannaveral Heights, and I see it in my mind as being a lot of small, old houses. And then I see a vision, and I'm sort of like trying to make them jive, because I don't see these people who are in these hundred-year-old houses saying, oh, let's put a ten-foot sidewalk in front of us with trees. I I got I got a problem there. I don't have a problem like on Garden Street, on 50, US-1, but that Cannaveral Heights, I mean, that's been these people's homes forever. And to say, now, we're going to change your neighborhood from all, I guess I'm thinking about Main Street, and Joe knows what I'm talking about. You go down Main Street, you have huge oaks and all these small smaller houses that are older. And I just, I have a hard time trying to make that melt.
I think we had some some concern expressed by a citizen in one of those older houses.
I think it was Tony.
Yes, I wasn't going to go there, but yes. And I I tend to see that point, and I think you did, too. I think that I used the term then as a that a lot of this is I think that, I used the term then, as a, that a lot of this is a vision, it's not in concrete, which is mainly why I'm all for sending it and getting their comments, if there are comments. I think that, you know, we're putting some fantastic improvements, and thoughts, and comprehensive plan ideas, and hopefully, you know, become more concrete, but I think you'll know more once it's sent. I don't think we do well by not sending it.
Again, the comprehensive plan amendment, the policies will be sent, if you agree with that, to the state. They will not see the code changes.
Okay.
That's something that we would adopt separately.
And just to clarify, no existing homeowner would be required to install anything in front of their house, and we're not anticipating that. The city, of course, could do that, but we're not anticipating that would happen in any sort of short order. The main thing that we're concerned about particularly is the vacant lots, because there are, and some of those are more on the southern end of the neighborhood, but there are a substantial number of vacant lots.
And I guess, for me, I'm thinking, you know, like Tony, or some of the other people that are in that area, do they want to have the small house with these huge oak trees, and then have this kind of set up the next two houses? I'm just sort of having a hard time with that.
And part of the challenge is, we need to provide those who might build something with enough incentive to build something. So, if, in those areas where, and we could certainly take a look at, if there's fully built-out streets where it's not appropriate, we could certainly take a look, second look at that.
Yeah.
But, you know, we're talking about increasing what types of things could be built, it's because we're looking, we're not seeing investment.
Okay. Member Cole.
I just want to echo what some of the other council members have said, and I realize a lot of work has been put into this, because I've had the opportunity in some of my other life to work on comprehensive plans. One of my questions, and maybe this one is to Brad more than anything else, before we do anything in these individual communities, the landscaping, the sidewalks, will we attempt to have community input, say, some of these areas that, as Member Nelson said about some of the areas, putting big trees in front of some of the smaller homes, will we let them have, allow them to have input into what we do in their neighborhoods?
We've actually already started that process. We participated in the community meeting, and the neighborhood to the west, that's now, and they actually told us what their, what their community name to be, which is Canaveral Heights. So, we've already started that. So, yes, we will continue having those conversations with more groups in the city.
Okay, and some of the vacant areas where, that you discussed in your plan, will we as a city have any control over the facade of that facility, or how that facility is developed architecturally?
We're proposing several processes in here, depending on what's going on. So, in the downtown of a significant project, already in our code requires that significant project to come before the CRA for approval, the site plan has to. Projects that are in the proposed area called Canaveral Heights, and even in the gateways, if they utilize these incentives, that has to come before city council, that's how it's proposed right now.
Okay.
The mechanism of that, we're not sure yet, we're still trying to flush that out. But I think, you know, like Eliza's already said, you have a pretty large project coming before you, wanting to utilize one of these tools and negotiate with the city, that needs to come before you in some form.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor, you back up?
No, no, no.
Okay.
All right, then, I would say this is a good place to call a card.
We have one card, it's Elizabeth Parker.
Elizabeth Parker, 3446 Trinell Circle. With regard to this, I was just curious, where is the, I mean, thank you for all the hard work, it sounds like you guys are working really hard on this, but where is the citywide zoning and the detailed recommendations available for the public to review and to understand? Because, once these are codified in the comprehensive plan, it drives the zoning changes, and the people who live in these neighborhoods are left with whatever you do to them. As a resident of Royal Oaks, I totally understand that, and looking down the road, I'm certain nobody living in a small home is going to want to look out their window at a five-story apartment building.
Right, right.
So, I think it's only fair that the public is seeing this before it's being voted on. So, where is this available currently, so that the public can see it?
Mr. Brad.
We have this available on a website called Titusville Tomorrow, it's on the city's website, and I could certainly share that with you directly.
Could you provide a link on the city page, so that people who live in the affected communities, and actually across the city can?
Yeah, it's on the city's website.
Okay, if you can just somehow publish that on the page, and direct people to that, so they know that it's coming, like upcoming opportunities, that would be really helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you so much. Any other card? This is where Walt used to say, "Council, what's your pleasure?", because we really just need to decide, you know, give them their direction. I think it's, obviously, I think everything is good, I think that everything is well-thought-out, but I also think that, kind of as noted here, and Member Cole noted too, and we'd like to know that the public has had input. You know, it sounds to me like, whatever we do here isn't permanent, even if this is sent to the state, it comes back with the corrections, and we're still dribbling it. But the point I'm making is, I think it's very important that, it's ultimately important that the citizens have had an input, and I realize we can't go to every house and, you know, put something in the door for every person, but somehow, I'd like to see it advertised well, and certainly being on the front page of our site is important. But I would probably venture to say that most people in our city don't know this is going on. And that's just how it works a lot of times, I get that. But we've got to do the best we can to make sure that the citizens know, because that's when you have problems, and that's when we would have problems, oh, we did this, oh, we did that. And I get, again, I've done this sort of thing in the education level, that no matter what I do, somebody's going to say, well, I didn't know. Let's do our very best to make sure they know. But outside of that, I would like to hear what council thinks about that. I think transparency is a key with this, more than anything else.
Member Stokoe.
Yep, no, I agree. I'm okay with sending it to the state, but when we do actually potentially vote certain policies into our code, I think that we can all agree, the decisions that we're having to make, especially with the laws coming down from Tallahassee, it has to be consistent with your comp plan. We hear that over and over, anytime we do a motion for approval or denial. And so, I just want to make sure that the public has a chance to look through those thoroughly, and they know that it's going to be brought before us to vote on. So, they could say, they all look fine, you're good to go, or, you know, they all look fine, except for this one we're having a really tough time with, we don't think that should be in there. I'm okay with the state right now, and then I do plan to kind of go through my own, and try to put it out as much as I can to citizens, so they can go through it, just because we're five people, and we don't know everything, so I always appreciate hearing from them.
That's why we need to hear from people. People need to see this.
Member Nelson.
I was going to say, I'd like to schedule a transmittal hearing, just so that people can come in, and hopefully, Eliza can turn around and re-present this to the people, and let them have some input on it. But I think everybody's right, it needs to be really well-advertised. You know, my concern is, and I think you're going to get some pushback from the people in that community.
Yeah, I think the pushback is definitely, I mean, I feel like we heard some of it already.
Yeah.
And at the same time, there's a lot of people out there that, you know, think we need to revitalize some things, and do some things, and refreshen some things, so I get that, too. It's a fine line, but the most important line is that, as best we can do, people are aware of what's just going on. It sounds like you already started that, I know both of you, but Brad, you noted that you're already starting the, trying to inform people of what's going on, and how this works. And outside of the, having the site on our site, are we pushing that out somehow?
We have it on our website, we plan to put it in the Titusville Talking Points, we have an email newsletter with quite a large distribution to a lot of emails, so we will make sure this goes out to public, and we'll continue to schedule some informal public meetings to tell people about this. We had planned to do that anyway. We don't, I'm not proposing a particular date for the transmittal hearing, so maybe months out, that'll allow us time to be able to get this published, or public, out to the public, so they get aware of it, prior to the actual transmittal hearing date. So, and I would anticipate, if you did approve this this evening, that we would probably schedule this out, probably at the end of this year, or possibly, at the earliest, maybe September. But we can certainly get.
It won't be in September.
It won't be, okay. Then, after that, so sometime before the end of this year, I would think, but that'll give us enough time, really, to be able to have this out to the public, to be able to tell them about, more about this, and get their input.
Very good. Vice Mayor.
Yes, my comment, I think we should move forward with this, with as much of the local resident input as we possibly can get, and by the best means that we can get their input.
It sounds like we still have plenty of time to do that, several months at least.
Member Stokoe.
Nope, I was just going to clarify, even with the state, they come back and they say everything looks fine, we still have the option to change what we want to change.
Yep. All right, so.
Just to clarify that, if you make real substantial changes, we're going to have to send it back to them.
Yes, which I would, if they end up being that way, I'm okay with that, but I just want to make it clear, because sometimes it could have the perception, the state said this, we can't, or our hands are tied, but we still do have that option.
So, are we needing to get a motion and a vote on this thing? So, Member Nelson.
We've to schedule a transmittal hearing for the draft comprehensive plan amendments to the future land use, transportation, and housing amendments. I think that's it.
I think that's it. City Attorney, City Manager, okay.
Sir.
I have a motion from Member Nelson, a second from Vice Mayor, roll call, vote.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes, and there is your advisement. City Manager.
Onto item 12B, which is the golf course ordinance advisability. On 25 July 2023, City Council directed staff to bring back the information, including the ordinances regarding the redevelopment of golf courses at the regular city council meeting on 8 August 2023, and closed for council's review as the study of the ordinance that was drafted and presented to council in 2016. So, what we're asking you, at this point, is if you want staff to continue to take a look at this ordinance, and bring it back to you with amendments, adjustments, or as it is informed now. And if not, tell us not to do anything on it.
Member Nelson.
After discussion with Mr. Broom, it sounds like the appropriate path forward is not to do anything.
City Attorney.
You're referencing the Senate Bill 250?
Right.
Does council have a copy of that language? I have a handout, if you'd like to see that language.
One that says we can't, excuse me, one that says we can't do anything, that puts a substantial burden.
What I'm passing down is Laws of Florida, Chapter 2023 304, which was Senate Bill 250. And I can just, it's section 14, I just gave you the one page of the law, I can certainly provide you the entire law, but what Member Nelson is referencing is section 14 in the middle of the page, which says, "A county or municipality located entirely or partially within 100 miles of where either Hurricane Ian or Hurricane Nicole may landfall, shall not propose or adopt any moratorium on construction, reconstruction, or redevelopment of any property damaged by Hurricane Ian or Hurricane Nicole, or propose or adopt more restrictive or burdensome amendments to its comprehensive plan or land development regulations, or propose or adopt more restrictive or burdensome procedures concerning review, approval, or issuance of a site plan, development permit, or development order, to the extent those terms are defined by Statute 1633164 before October 1, 2024. And any such moratorium or restrictive or burdensome comprehensive plan, amendment, land development regulation, or procedures shall be null and void ab initio." Ab initio just means from the beginning. So, that was the law that was recently passed, and so, any ordinances, or land development, you know, regulations, comprehensive plan amendments that we adopt, need to keep this in mind, as we draft them.
So, do you believe that this would include Titusville?
Titusville is within the 100 miles range of landfall that is described.
So, my thought is, I looked at it, our old ordinance, and as I told the city manager, I went with my daughter up to Beaufort, South Carolina.
Ma'am, can I get you to come a little bit, thank you.
Okay. I went up to Beaufort, South Carolina with my daughter, to look at property, and there was an area in there that was absolutely gorgeous, right outside of town, and it had a town center similar to what the old ordinance we looked at, talked about. And it was like a restaurant, it was a bakery, it was a spa, post office, I don't know how they got a post office, but it had a post office. And there were people that were riding their bikes down there, we drove, people who were driving golf carts down there, it was just an absolutely gorgeous little neighborhood. And so, I thought about that, but then I also thought about, right now, that Royal Golf Course has stormwater on it, is sort of a low area that is probably good for us in terms of aquifer and all those kind of things. So, with this added into the mix, and that includes La Cita, not just Royal, but if something happens to La Cita, we need to figure out what we want to do. So, I would say not go forward at this point, that's my thought.
Say what, I'm sorry?
I would say not to go forward at this point.
Member Stokoe.
No, I was just going to say, I agree, I think even, I've seen those developments like you're talking about in South Carolina, even with this one, I feel like if we could go through with it, I think because of where the location is, it's not necessarily next to the spa and those restaurants, it's more the center of our city, essentially, I just don't think it would be feasible, and one, I don't think, another thing, I don't think we can do it, so I think just stopping right now.
Do we need a motion?
No, we're going to, I think we have at least one card. Yeah, so let's go ahead and call the card or cards.
Elizabeth Parker, and this is the only card.
So, what do you think?
I think we shouldn't go forward with it for additional reasons, so I appreciate the reasons you guys have boached. I think, number one, the Live Local Act, as Dan earlier referenced, is a huge thing. If you rezone Royal Oak Country Club to a mixed-use property, we then, as a city, and as a community of Royal Oak, lose entirely any control over what happens on that property. And I think this is an important point, too, for 12A, which I should have brought up and didn't, because in setting up your mixed-use communities, you are now ceding to the state, Live Local Act, the contractors can build whatever they want, we might want them to build four-story, but they might want to build 10, and I don't know what we, as a city, can do if that happens. Further, you're right, the surface of aquifer is recharged on the Royal Golf Course, and it goes out to the St. Johns, it also feeds the Indian River. It's also a catchment for our stormwater, so should you pave over Royal Oak Country Club, you're going to flood the surrounding homes. The water also isn't in any way containerized, people have not quantified what that water is, how much is flowing, and it does flow to an area of critical concern. to an area of critical concern south of Royal Oak Golf Course. Additionally, if you look at the comprehensive plan, in order to build out that area, we have to have urban services. As far as I know, we don't have capital budget planned to put those services in place. And additionally, Royal Oak isn't served by any axle or collector roads. It's served by local roads, which are already pretty much maxed out for traffic. You're going to double, triple, who knows what, the amount of traffic. And to put a commercial property in there, you have to have it either on a collector or an axle road, I believe. So, there are a lot of reasons we definitely don't want to do that plan, even though it sounds great. And beyond that, who is going to utilize that? We have mostly, you know, we do have some retirees, but our small community is mostly working families. So, we've got downtown Titusville that we're trying to revitalize. Why would we split the businesses that should be going downtown to drive our revitalization and drop them in the middle of a residential neighborhood that's landlocked from any main roads? So, those are my thoughts, not to mention we do have wildlife, we do have eagles, we do have, somebody has supposedly images of some endangered species as well, scrub jays. So, all things that we should take into consideration when pondering what to do with Royal Golf Course.
Any questions for her? I see none. I'm glad you came. Glad I got to hear from you. Member Nelson will continue.
Thank you.
Okay, so, can I ask you a question? So, what would you want to see happen?
I think there are, you know, two options most people would like to see. You know, one is obviously some kind of recreational facility. I think, you know, at one point, we tried to get the city to buy it as a park, and I realize it's very costly to maintain, and that's probably why that wouldn't work, but maybe there's some way to split it between a park and some kind of a recreational facility that isn't heavily trafficked but is enough to support itself. Alternatively, you know, I think you can build some homes out there and without overwhelming the property. And, you know, as a community, we want to see our property values at least maintained properly. We'd like to see them grown. So, in order to do that, why not put country estates out there? You can put out three-acre country estates and they could sell for quite a bit of money. It would be beautiful. It would maintain the ability of the ground to be porous to the aquifer.
Okay.
And it would serve to keep that property doing what it's already doing for our community.
Okay.
So, I mean, those are just my ideas. I, you know, you can certainly, I think Kathleen may have already polled the community to try to get input for her survey as to what other people would like to see.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Again, I'm glad you came and we got to hear that part. And again, I will make it clear, this whole golf course redevelopment report was based, and we all know Royal Oak's a big deal, I get that, but it's any golf course, not that we have 12 of them, and that there is no rezoning request or anybody, but we all get that the buses were moving out there at one point, and I haven't heard anything in a long time, but I get it. So, I thank you.
Thank you.
Next card?
No more cards.
No more cards? All right. Do we need a motion on this sort of thing here? Because.
Yes, sir.
All right, Member Nelson?
Motion to not consider action regarding the.
Yeah, denial. Would you call it denial? No?
Can I call it denial?
I don't know, denial?
You really need a motion if you're going to advise us to do something, but if you're going to say you don't want us to do anything, the motion is not to take any action on this.
So, we don't need to make a motion with no action?
Well, skip that.
A motion to not take any action would work.
Okay, we put that.
A motion to not take any action on the golf course ordinance.
I have a motion to not take any action from Member Nelson and.
Second.
Where the heck were you?
Second.
Member, is there anybody else? Second from Member Stokel. Roll call vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Deese?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
No movement. I don't know what else we call that, no advisability. I don't know. We're not moving forward.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for being here, too, by the way. Appreciate that. I got all lost here. Okay, Mayor, we're off with two petitions requests.
I think Commander Damon.
Commander?
I've got like 13 of them.
You've got three minutes. You've got three minutes. All right. Mayor's report, my basic mayor's report is went to several back-to-school activities, went to the Astronaut High School. Krista Miller does a great job out there as the principal at Astronaut, and I've never seen a school get their feeder systems together so well. By that, I mean, I've been to three or four different meetings that they talk about their problems and they share how they solve them, and that goes all the way from Pinewood, Oak Park, Memes Elementary, to Madison Middle School, to the high school, and they all come together. This past Saturday, they came together out of Sandpoint Park and had a backpack giveaway. So, I think they do a great job, and, you know, I just wanted to make that toss out because I was there and it was hot as heck. The police were handing out water and we had a couple heat issues. Right there. Yeah, it was real hot in the pavilion. That's where I found it to be real hot. I'm real excited. I wish all of our schools, I can use the word especially, I guess, Titusville High School and Principal Gonzalez, they're going to do a great job over there. I'm really impressed with all the things that have happened since she became the principal. I think that there's an outstanding spirit there, and I look forward to being out there very soon to celebrate the volleyball team's 40th anniversary of their state championship and the football team's 40th anniversary of their second back-to-back state championship. So, that's coming up in August, couple weeks. Excited for all the schools. I will be at schools on opening day waving to people coming in. It's hard, it's not only hard, it's impossible to hit all the schools. Tomorrow morning, it is tomorrow morning, 9:00.
I believe it's Thursday.
No, I'm talking about Superintendent Rendell.
Oh.
You better check that calendar, but I think tomorrow morning, we meet with the superintendent. I'm very impressed with Mark Rendell, the superintendent, who was actually the principal of Titusville High School while I was there and got to know him very well, very impressed with his effort to come out and meet the mayors and the city managers of as many cities as he can and just tell them what he's up to and what he wants to get done. So, I'm very excited about that, and I'll check my calendar. We'll see if that's tomorrow or not. But with that, it's back-to-school week, basically, and I know the football teams are out there, and it's hot. It's hot. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I speak as a pastor and as a vice mayor. This time, we just finished a three-week program helping kids work through the summer to keep their educational standards up. We had a wonderful three-week program, and we just hope that they do well in school so that, so we're out there trying to boost what the teachers and the educators are doing. We had three wonderful teachers this year. One finished her doctorates and the other was working on her doctorate. And so forth, and we had a wonderful time, and the kids were very, very, very good because they had good leadership.
That's how it works.
That's good leadership.
You want to say a good kid? I say so good leadership. You good? Member Stokel?
I'm good. I am leaving tomorrow to go to the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference, so I will give you guys an update when I get back, but I'm excited about the agenda. I think there's one session I was really excited about, which was the land use and some of this Live Local Act, so I will do my best.
Yeah, let us know.
To try to figure out what I can.
You do a good job of informing us, and that's the one thing I have found about the League of Cities, you're much more informed, although, again, Member Vice Mayor and I sit at a table in the back so we don't hear as much as you hear, but.
Yes, hopefully we'll give some stuff, but I don't know if they'll, I don't know if it will be on the actual agenda or not, but we should.
I'm trying to think of some more stuff, but no. But in reality, I do appreciate it. All the time, before I started going to League of City, I was always looking forward to your part because you always informed us mostly about the bad news that was coming down, but appreciate that. Member Nelson?
Absolutely nothing.
You're the star of the day.
Yes, it is 9:48, and we could actually make it out here.
So, I prepared a statement.
No. I was going to say you've got three minutes, but I was going to cut it down. The red light was coming on. City Manager?
Yes, sir, just to confirm, we are meeting the superintendent tomorrow at 9:00.
9:00, okay, and then we have the other thing at?
And then school starts at, on Thursday.
The next day, yeah.
Yep. Just as a.
No, Thursday, this Thursday. School starts. No, no.
Yep. Just a reminder, the budget workshop is August 17th at 5:00.
Thank you.
And then the public hearings will follow in September. I just want to remind the city council that the Forest Main Replacement Project begins tomorrow. There'll be rolling road closures, starting at the South Street Lift Station going all the way to the Osprey Plant, and we anticipate this $9.5 million project to be completed by the end of the year.
How do you think it's going to affect traffic?
Well, like I said, we've got a segment that's going to be closed tomorrow, which the South Street, basically up to about City Hall. There'll be detour signs around where that work will be done. Once that work's done, we'll open that section up and then close the next section.
How much will that affect US-1?
It shouldn't affect US-1 at all.
I didn't think so, but I thought we better ask that and get that out there, because if you're not affecting US-1, it should be minimal. I mean, if it starts affecting US-1, you're going to mess with the Christmas parade.
I thought I would have asked that, Scott. I did that. I did that on purpose.
Go ahead, sir.
That's it.
City Attorney?
With any questions you have.
Just an update, we did conduct the mediation in the Nelson case, if you recall that. So, at the next meeting, I believe you'll hear the results of the mediation and staff's proposal on that.
Perfect. All right, anything else? With that, thank you very much, and let's have a great back-to-school week. I appreciate that the TPD and the fire departments both will be all over the place, and I'll get to run into them, and we'll all be sweating. Remember that, we'll all be sweating. Adern.